Good afternoon. It is Tuesday, May 11th, 1 o'clock, and this is Lee County School Board briefing for today. We're starting out with a discussion with Mr. Quick, and he will be introduced by our Chair, Ms. Debbie Jordan.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn, and good afternoon to everyone. Today Attorney Quick is here to share with us so we could have conversation on the firms that he had contacted, and I just, this has been, this goes back to when we were asked to go ahead and let's get some outside investigators, and so I put this into Mr. Quick's hand. I've removed myself from that, other than the fact of just having conversation with Attorney Quick. He contacted the groups here that you see before you. Also, he did have conversation with them to make sure that they had no inside sources in the district. They're not familiar with anyone here, so it is completely outside the district. And now Attorney Quick, I'm going to turn this over to you because we have two things on this. The one is the choosing the information, and I think we've had this for well over a week, you know, the information for us to look at. So we're gonna, I'm gonna turn this over to him. We're gonna do this first, and then the second one will be, then we'll be speaking about the potential external investigations. So Ms. Attorney Quick, I'm gonna turn this over to you, please, and thank you for being here.
Hi, and thank you for having me. It's good to see everyone. I hope you all had a good weekend and Happy Mother's Day.
Thank you.
So yeah, so I circulated around, and I know it's in your agenda packet that has three potential external investigators. There were a number more that I had contacted, but one of the, you know, basic criteria that I understood from the board was that they had no connection to the Lee County School District, so that it was a completely external investigation. So others that I contacted had some form, whether they had done work with the district in the past or whatnot, so I did not bring those ones to the board. The three that I brought forward today are people that I feel comfortable, if, you know, whoever the board chooses, I would feel comfortable with all three of them in terms of, you know, doing good work and, you know, doing a full and complete investigation for the board. They do, all three confirm that they have not done work for the school district in the past. They confirm that they had, excuse me, no connections with what I'll call senior management as well as any members of the board. The only one, there was one of them who is a law school classmate of your, the chief legal counsel, Mr. Williams, but she informed me, she, what she describes as very infrequent contact with him since law school, and which that's probably, I don't, I don't know when he graduated, but my guess would be, he's probably around my age, which would be about 15, 16 years ago. So that's the only, I'm sorry, that's the only somewhat of a connection. Again, she's just a law school classmate, but not somebody who has connections, but I did want to mention that for your consideration. So the, that is the, at least on your list in terms of, let's see, I can go in the order that they're listed on, in your agenda. The first is a firm, HR &amp; Beyond. It's a former lawyer. She's based out in Broward County, and this is, this is really what she does. Her name is Eva Lisa Thomas, and she conducts what I would consider HR investigations, which I would consider these to fall under that umbrella, primarily for private entities. But as I understand, she has done investigations for public entities as well. So I guess a recovering, a recovering litigator, I could, I would call her. The second firm is called the Norfus Firm, also another recovering litigator. Her name is Natalie Norfus. She is, she's the one who's the law school classmate of Mr. Williams. She previously, she has conducted similar investigations to what we're talking about here, both for public and private entities. In her, early in her career, she did actually represent school boards up in the state of Ohio, not in the state of Florida, but she does have experience representing school boards as well as, you know, conducting investigations for public entities. She's also a former in-house attorney for Burger King, and her, her position there was conducting internal investigations as well as EEOC issues for them. And the last is a law firm, Rumberger, Kirk &amp; Caldwell. They are, they have offices all over. The two attorneys that would be part of this team that I spoke with are, I'm checking, I believe, out of their Tampa, no, Orlando office. And again, they, they are, they don't practice exclusively in these types of investigations, but that is a significant portion of their work that they do. And again, they do that, as well as the others, they do it for both public and private entities as well as, they have done it for school boards here in the state of Florida. In terms of my review of them, I spoke with each of them at length multiple times to interview them, as well as the ones that did not qualify under the minimum guidelines. And they were, I also spoke with others in contacts that I have in and around the state just to make sure that these were people that I would feel comfortable bringing forward for the board to consider for the investigation, and I did not receive anything that would make, obviously, I didn't receive anything that would make me not bring them forward. So they all, they all came recommended from, from people who either had, who either knew them or had interactions with them or dealt with them in the past that I was able to connect with. So those are the three that I brought forward. I mean, they do have differing ranges in terms of their hourly rate. I know Ms. Norfus, her hourly rate is $500 an hour, and the others are both in the $200 range. I will double check. The Rumberger rate is 275 an hour for partners, and then any associates would be at 225. And the HR &amp; Beyond is at 250 an hour. So it's, it's like, similar to the Rumberger, it's like a blended rate of 250 an hour. So I'm happy to answer any questions in terms of the investigators or, you know, provide any guidance that the board may be looking for.
Okay, thank you. And then also, when, thank you for sending all this to all of us, as well as the retainer information as well, so we do have all of that as well. So does, I'll go ahead and start with any questions for Attorney Quick? Ms. Kittens?
Good afternoon, Attorney Quick.
Good afternoon, hi.
So with each one, did you say they've all had, you know, experience with school districts and all that? Any one of them more than the other?
I would say Ms. Norfus has more experience, not as, not in the state of Florida or as an investigator, but actually sitting and representing school boards in Ohio as the school board attorney. In terms of investigations in Florida, that would be Rumberger, Kirk &amp; Caldwell have more experience with, with school boards.
And were they with larger districts as well? Do we know?
I don't remember the district, but I believe it was either the equivalent or slightly larger than Lee, I believe. I don't believe it was one of the smaller ones.
And the HR &amp; Beyond?
She has not experienced with school boards, but does have experience with public entities.
Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Fisher?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Quick. In your conversations, and I didn't see this as I read through the proposals, but is there a timeline based on the amount of work that you presented to them, or did you not even do that yet?
I didn't have that because I didn't know exactly what, since there's a number of complaints, I didn't know exactly which, you know, which of the complaints would be referred, because that might, might impact in terms of the timeframe. But all of them did stress, actually did stress to me, even before I stressed it to them, the importance of an expeditious investigation, which is, which I was glad to hear because it was something I was planning to stress, but in their, they all stressed that to me as well, that in their experience, I mean, obviously, they're not sacrificing thoroughness for time, but they did stress that, you know, an expeditious and thorough investigation is an important aspect. So they are looking at this as something that is in a tighter window than, than not.
Okay, thank you.
And then to remember, when we first started this, it was, I think we had three possibles, and now there's, we're up to like nine.
There were, the day that, yeah, the day I was here last, there were two, and then there was one that was, was referred down by the board the next day. And then, yeah, we are up to 10 actually now, as possibilities, although some of them, when we get into it, some of them do have overlap, but there are 10 separate, yes.
Thank you. Any more questions, please? Ms. Kittens?
Is there, I mean, have we decided yet what the process would be, or do they already have a process to start? That when they start, you know, what type of things do they do?
Now, I mean, I did talk with them about generally, because, you know, obviously, every investigation is a little different, but, but the first step that all of them talked about, which I agree with them, is gathering the, obviously, they need to, you know, go through the complaint, which they've already, at least the ones I've spoken with them about, gather all the documents that they can get from the, from the district in terms of, and the complainant, in terms of the issues that are addressed there. Go through all of those, make out a plan in terms of who they're going to speak with and who, you know, who is the, I guess, the world of potential, the universe, at least initial universe of potential people to speak with, and go through and speak with each of those, and obviously, from that, it might, it might draw another person in that they weren't aware of, or maybe some additional documents, but that's kind of generally the process that they all discussed, and I think that's the most prudent process so that they can be, you know, well-educated going forward and before they speak with everybody going through the documents.
And this question is for...
I was just gonna say Attorney Quick, we, and that's something we are not, they're the ones who will be doing the process. We are not going to get ourselves into their processing on how this is, because this is what they do. So we are looking to hire these people for them to go and do the investigations of this, and we will then receive the information back from them, correct?
Yeah, this is a separate, you know, independent external investigation, obviously, you know, the, you know, within the bounds of, you know, obviously, there's budgets and things like that. We need that, that, you know, I will work with them to make sure that they, they're, you know, if they're, it looks like they're, you know, there are any issues with that, obviously, that's something we will, we'll have to address, but yes.
Thank you.
But yeah, this is what they do. This is, you know, what they do on a regular basis.
Okay, Ms. Kittens?
Okay, what I was about to say was, since we have so many different cases, the prioritization of those cases, and it's similar to when we hired RSM, and we as a board decided on the priority as to where we wanted to start. And I would like to bring that up for a question to see if anyone is interested in doing that because it may take longer on some, or some may be more relevant, and I would just like to see what our thought would be, not taking over their job, but just giving some idea, and it can be done individually and submitted to them. We don't even have to know what everyone else is saying, but just to give them some idea as to our thought process on it.
Okay, and then Ms. Kittens, that's going to be the next conversation as far as legal sufficiency and the, and the cases that we have. That's part two of this conversation, when we start speaking on the investigations. So is that okay that we hold it till that point, or is that, do you feel that that's something that needs to be, that's going to help us make a decision on the firms?
That's fine. You've got it all organized, that's fine.
Well, I don't have it all organized. I'm one out of seven, and I'm trying to do what was asked of me, of the board.
Ms. Jordan, I...
And I'm asking you the question, do you think that it has to do with choosing one of the firms, or shall we just take that and put it with the other?
You just explained to me, Ms. Jordan, that you are going to discuss that later. I can wait until it's discussed. I just don't want it to go away, and we don't discuss that part of it.
That would be great, thank you. Ms. Chivinelli?
Okay, so I just have a couple of questions. How do we, okay, so, and bear with me, because I've got, I've been thinking about this for a while. All right, so how do we know what's not already being investigated out of these 10 complaints? Have you determined that, Mr. Quick? And so that's one question is that, you know, some of these are criminal, so, were criminal allegations, so I share with you my concern that hiring these attorney firms are going to, and they're going to represent the client that, and so I want to make sure this is a fair, transparent process, and that all these complaints are treated equally and, because whether they're legally sufficient or not, I mean, I want everyone to know that this district went to the extreme to make sure that this is done right, and that they're comfortable with that process. So that was my concern, is that these are all attorneys, and attorneys represent their client, right? So we're their client, so I want to make sure that this is a fair process. So, and that's why I mentioned to you just, in some of our conversations, that it be someone that maybe utilizes an investigator, a lot of attorneys hire investigators to do the actual initial process. I mean, the OIG, the Ethics Commission, they use investigators. They don't, and then it gets back to, was it legally sufficient? So I think that we want to be really careful that this process is done where everyone's comfortable, including the complainants. That's my, that's my biggest concern. So if some of these are under criminal investigation, do we even get involved in those? That's the first question. And then, could any of these be investigated under RSM? We've eliminated that process that was supposed to be in our ethics process, that kind of, this whole whistleblowing hotline has just, you know, not really, has not operated the way it was supposed to, or that, the way the board had given direction, since our own board attorney only received one complaint, and there's been several. I know, I've been spoken to, that we've had many complaints that come through the whistle, yet the board attorney received one. So that's my concern, that this board needs to discuss is this process as well. So, and I'm sorry to be all over the place, but those are some of my concerns when we pick, you know, a firm.
And let me, I'll break that up. There were a couple of things in there, so let me unpack. In terms of if any of these are currently under investigation, which this is, I was planning to talk about when we, when we discussed the actual complaints, but I'll give a little bit of a preview now. It is my understanding, or I came to the understanding, that at least a few of them are part of an OIG complaint that is open, that has now been open. So, you know, that might impact whether you guys even want to refer those ones, and I'll get into that, you know, when we, when we talk about it. In terms of criminal allegations, I'm not aware of any criminal investigation, doesn't mean that there's not one going on. I mean, a lot of times, obviously, if there's a criminal investigation, it's not known publicly. But the investigation, I guess, that would be conducted by the district would, while there may be criminal allegations and criminal aspects in them, there are also allegations related to violations of board policy or ethics types of issues that would not be part of a criminal complaint. And so I think that as long as you don't interfere with a criminal investigation, I think you could, you could contemporaneously investigate those, should the board choose, or they could wait to see if they have any reason to believe that there's a criminal investigation. The other part with regard to attorneys versus, I guess, non-attorney investigators, I would say that these, these are, what I, at least two of the three that I brought forward, really, they are investigators. They're still licensed to practice law, but they really, this is what they do, they conduct investigations. And while they are attorneys, they're, they're not advocates for the board. They're being hired to investigate independently what these issues are, and they may have things that, that come back that the board doesn't like, and that's within their scope of services. So they're not being hired as an advocate to defend, you know, defend against the allegations or defend the actions of any board member or district employee. They're, they're being retained to investigate and bring back the good and the bad.
Okay, so two things on that. Which, which two firms actually that is their, which one, that's their, they do the, actually investigating, that's really primary, their, their first job?
That would be the Norfus Firm and HR &amp; Beyond.
Okay, thank you.
And then the, the other firm, Rumberger, Kirk &amp; Caldwell, the two attorneys do other things, but the bulk of their practice is investigations, but it's not exclusive.
Thank you. Second, regarding criminal, if there's criminal activity, I have been told, I know on another incident we had at Harnes Marsh, that they were, there was an investigation, and they, they were very clear that they did not want the school district doing an investigation or involved until they resolved their investigation. So if that is in fact, because we've had, Dr. Atkins had said there was a criminal investigation, and I believe Ms. Patrica said there was a criminal investigation, so I, I hesitate to get involved in that one if that is in fact the case.
Okay, yeah, I mean, if there is one going on, I mean, you know, as your attorney, I would, you know, I would give you guidance that, to tell you that if you know there's a criminal investigation going on, it would probably be prudent to wait on that, because you could get the benefit of whatever that criminal investigation is once it's closed and, and once those document, you know, that information becomes available. So if there are any, you know, I think, yeah, it would be prudent depending on, you know, for whatever the investigations are, if we know about that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So then that would be something that needs to come up to you, so that way you will have that information.
Right.
If anybody's aware, I mean, you know, without, you know, getting into too much detail, obviously, we have, you know, we have confidential issues in terms of investigations, but if anybody's aware, certainly let, when we're discussing the complaints as to which will be referred, I think that would be important for the board to, to know if, if you're aware that there's at least some aspect of that is, is currently under criminal investigation, so you can make your decision on whether to proceed or, or wait on that.
Perfect, thank you.
And certainly, one thing that the board could do, if the board, this would be for the board, the board could either table it and defer it, or they, the board could say, yes, we want to investigate, but that investigation will not start until, unless and until the criminal investigation is completed. So, you know, the board has options as to how it wants to deal with those.
Ms. Chivinelli, did you have?
Well, that led me to one other thing, you know, what is our objective here? What are, what are we going to do once we get the information? I think that's vital. That conversation needs to happen now, so that the public is aware what our intentions are regarding the outcomes of these investigations. I think that's really going to be vital. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
So I think Norfus, for me, is off the table, given the price, and I'm comfortable with either of the other two entities that you have referred, given your level, your equal level of confidence in both. I could live with either. For me, Norfus is too expensive.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I just have a couple questions having to do with some logistics. When this was first brought up quite a while back, there were just, actually, I think it started with just one particular investigation, and at that time, I recused myself because I was named in that. In the interim, we have had, as you just said, 10 that have come up before us, and all of them are confidential, and I'm just going to say that I am not the only one sitting on this dais now that has been named in one or more of these. So, given that, I've been sitting here quietly and not really having a lot to say, except this question. How do we, how do we approach this? It's confidential. How do we, you know, say so-and-so is brought up in this, it, this is really important, we, we need to investigate this one, but not that one? I mean, how, how do we do that?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of the basics of how, I understand you're asking more than just the basics of how we're going to discuss it when we discuss it, and I'll get to that.
Yeah, because all of us, not all, I'm not going to say all of us, I'm just going to say more than one of us is named. Therefore, should all of us be, I mean, how do we approach this?
So in terms of how I discuss it, I plan to discuss it just by either incident number or case number, or there's one that's, doesn't have it, and I can just call it the whistleblower complaint. In terms of voting, I think you can all vote on it. I know that you had, you had recused yourself from voting before, but there is not a, at least not, as I'm aware, there is no potential financial gain or loss related to these invest, you know, whether, whether an investigation takes place. So I think you all can vote on the investigations, whether it's individually or as a whole. And then in terms of how, how the board decides which ones get, which ones get referred and which ones do not, I guess that's why you guys get the big bucks. It's, I mean, I guess that's why you get the big bucks. I mean, ultimately, it's, it's the board's policy, and, and only the board can authorize an investigation into itself or any one of its board members, other than obviously the, the state can, can conduct investigations, and there can be criminal as well. But in terms of that, that is really up to... But in terms of that, that is really up to the board to determine if they feel it merits an investigation. Now, like I said, I think that there are some that are being investigated by the OIG. So there is, or at least their complaint's been filed. I'm not sure what the status is in terms of how far along it is, but that's at least there. There are other ones as well that could fall within the jurisdiction of the Commission on Ethics. So you wouldn't necessarily have to make a determination. That could be something that could be sent to the Commission on Ethics. Now, it would have to be done as a formal, as a complaint by the board, not as a, not as a referral. They don't take referrals and they don't take anonymous complaints to the Commission on Ethics, but that's certainly another means. So there are other avenues available, I guess what I'm getting at, there are other avenues available, as well as there's one that could fall within the jurisdiction.
So just, just to make sure I'm clear, we could bring these up by case numbers, this really long case numbers, and, but then we really would be hampered in any discussion because we couldn't say, well, in this one, so-and-so, I think that's real, I mean, that...
Yeah, the confidential nature.
That's where I really have a problem with the confidentiality, and certainly we can't really discuss the merits of choosing one over another, and perhaps we would need the list. I mean, I've got some of the numbers written down, but not all of them. And then a notation already investigated, under investigation now by OIG, or, I mean, is that how we would approach the logistics on this?
Yeah, what I could do, and I feel your, your...
My frustration.
Frustration with, you know, the, you know, being, your hand tied behind your back a little bit in terms of being able to discuss the merits. When we, when we start discussing the complaints, what I can do is I can go through all 10 of them by, by either incident number or case number. They were in the email that I had, had sent around, I refer to them that way, and I can go through each one and tell you whether it's currently, you know, currently with OIG or some other entity.
Thank you.
Ms. Vaughn, are you good?
Yeah.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes, I had a couple more questions, too. When it comes to the process, these investigators have familiarity with the Florida state law and the process used with the Office of the OIG and the Ethics Commission?
The, the ones that are being proposed, yes, they're, they're, I mean, they're not, they are not investigators for those.
Right.
But, but they are familiar with, with that process and those issues as well.
Okay, great. And then regarding the fees, was there any mention of a cap? You know what I mean? Like up to, up to a certain amount? Or was it just, because we don't know the timeline, we don't know exactly how many we're going to ask them to investigate, so I didn't know if that was mentioned at all in any negotiations or conversation?
I did discuss with them at the last, when I was here in March, there was discussion in terms of the cost. I know, Ms. Morgan had asked me to estimate what the cost would be for, for those, again, we weren't talking about all of the same investigations, and I gave an estimate of $20,000 to $40,000. And I did discuss that with each of the three, and each of the three understood that to be the amount that I had given to the, the board and, and felt that that was an appropriate amount.
And then I didn't, I don't think I heard the answer regarding RSM. Are they completely out of the picture because they're our employee? And we're the ones who are?
And also, in terms of if you guys want to put a cap on anything, you could, certainly could, and I'll answer the RSM question, too, but this just popped in my head, if you guys wanted to put a cap and say, you know, if it, if the, if it exceeds X amount per, per investigation, that they need to come, you know, to come back to the board or, you know, a check-in to, to confirm. I mean, it, it's a little tough because either you're all in or you're all out on the investigation, but I understand, obviously, you want to, you don't want to just have a runaway train, you know, with funds going. In terms of RSM, it was my understanding that this was referred over to me because they felt that it needed to, to have an external investigator. Certainly, the, the, there were, there was at least one, the, the original one that we did, the original investigation that we discussed, not the whistleblower complaint, but the other one, that under your board policy absolutely required an external investigator. And, and I think that was, that was part of what triggered this. And then the other one, the whistleblower complaint, had some overlap between those two, and also it, it needed, for, for various reasons, it didn't require, but really needed an external investigator. And so I think that was part of why RSM was not involved. In terms of the other ones, I'm not, I'm not sure, I haven't been able to, I haven't spoken with them, I'm not sure why they felt that this needed to come to us as opposed to them being, being the investigator on it. But certainly in terms of, I could, I could speak with whomever you choose, and RSM, I can connect them so that if there's a way to limit fees and for them to utilize RSM, I can connect the two to, to hopefully be able to, to limit, limit the expense to, to the district and the board.
And then the other thing is that, a question I had was, in the event that some of the complaints are already being investigated by the Office of the Inspector General or the Ethics Commission, we wouldn't still go ahead and hire an external investigation for those cases, would we? Would we wait till the outcome of the state investigation?
Yeah, you can do, like I said, I think it would be prudent if you're going to conduct an external investigation to wait for, because then you get the benefit of their work and the benefit of their input. So I think that would be, would be prudent. I mean, certainly, you, I think you could, but you would, you would be losing out on some free information.
Thank you.
And can I, I'm going to just shed some light on RSM as well. That's something that we really, we definitely will have to go back and revisit with them because the way that the Lighthouse is set up, it either goes to employee, employees go to HR, the other ones, they have no idea. If it has the word "board member" in any of that at all, it's like, where does it go? They have no idea where it goes. So that's how it, all of a sudden, it starts coming here and then going to the conflict attorney, because when it says "board member," "board attorney," then it takes all of us out of this, and that's why it has turned on to them. So that's something that we really do have to revisit with them and the way that this is, the Lighthouse is operating. So that's going to be coming up when they, when we have that revisit with them. So, yeah, it's, this is what has taken place now. And Ms. Javonelli, I know you had your hand up, and then I'll go to Ms. Gittens.
So regarding confidentiality, I think, I know if something's in litigation, it, it can definitely be confidential. I know if there's an investigation on an employee, that's confidential, right?
Yes, there's a state statute that covers the confidentiality and I think all of these involve at least some level employees as well.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to, I don't know that people understand that.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so for the public purpose, there's a statute that...
You know, we're, it's being recorded, so, I mean, I think it's vital that people understand that, so, thank you. That's what I wanted to bring up.
Ms. Gittens, and then Ms. Patrica.
So, going along with the last question, are our complaints against board members confidential in that we are public figures?
I don't think so.
They are, I believe all of the board member ones are tied in with employees as well. So I don't think, I've...
Can we, can we check on that?
I will check, because I don't know, I've never seen the distinction like that before, but I, I'm hesitant to, I will check. I'm hesitant just because I don't have the statute in front of me, but I will double check.
No, 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 you can get back to us. I was just wondering that because, you know, we're public figures and all that stuff. So, the question I have, though, is, when you were talking to the different firms or companies, were they aware of the number? Did you discuss the number at all? Because my question is, if they're going into it and there's, there's 10 potentially, and who's to say we don't get five more tomorrow? So is it just, and maybe that's where I'm confused with the board, are we just looking at these specific ones, or as others come along, is there going to be a need to do that? I'm not really clear on, on that point.
Okay, well, there were some that we had to use outside. It was mandated. So that's, that was number one. And then, and of course, because of the fact of how it's coming in, when anything that has BM in there, it goes to HR, and HR throws it back over because they will not touch anything dealing with board members because they cannot. So it goes over to, to this area, and then that's where it winded up with Mr. Quick. So that's why we need to, to reevaluate how Lighthouse is doing, how they're sending that information, and where does RSM tie into that? So that in itself is a whole another issue that we really need to. So in the meantime, if something else does come this way, we may, it may have to go to the conflict attorney if Ms. DePree Bruno cannot handle it. So it all depends, it's all of this, everything's like up in the air as far as that is concerned because at this moment, our own attorney cannot handle a lot of this stuff. So that's why Attorney Quick is doing it.
And in terms of the number, I did, when I first reached out to him, I was aware of, well, the two that were discussed in March, and then the one that was referred, I think it was the next day. But I did let them know that there, so when I initially spoke with them, I knew of three. As they came in, I did keep them apprised that there were more, although I, they, they knew, I, I did not have, the board had not yet confirmed that they wanted to refer those to, to an external investigator. So I just kept them apprised that there were more, but didn't tell them that, yes, these were going to definitely be coming down the pipeline. There was one that was filed over the weekend, so they're not aware of that one yet. But, you know, certainly, you know, whomever you choose, whether it's any one of these three or, or someone else, I will certainly make sure that they're aware of all the ones that the, the board has asked be, be investigated, and I will work with them to make sure that, that it gets, gets up and running and a thorough investigation takes place.
So Ms., Madam Chair, considering what you said about the process and, and what Mr. Quick is saying, Attorney Quick, I, I think we need to sooner than later schedule a time to discuss this and make those decisions before, or even in, you know, the same time that we're looking to hire someone, because that can affect their scope of work if we don't get a handle on what goes where and who goes, who's on first and that type of thing.
My hope is that we'll do that today as well, that, coming out of today, and then, assuming that there's consensus reached, there will be an item that we can, I'll ask to be added for good cause to the action item to confirm it tonight. But the, the, my desire, my hope today is, is that you guys will be able to select somebody and then also confirm exactly which of the complaints will be investigated so that I can get them started tomorrow.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
So we are 41 minutes in, and we've made no decisions. So may I ask that we, we sort of move ahead? Are you looking for consensus for us as to which firm to hire, and then we go through the list of 10 and decide where they go?
That's what I'm looking for, in that, in that way, tonight, whether you guys do it as a consented item or whether you do it as an individual item, we can get a official, a formal board vote confirming it. But, but, yeah, that way I can bring forward person X for tonight.
Yeah, and I do realize that we are 41 minutes in. We had this scheduled for an hour, but I want to make sure that everybody does have the, get their questions out and have them answered so that there's, you know, everybody feels good about who they're going to, to pick and they feel confident in that. So, you know, I definitely want to make sure that there's no unanswered questions. Do we have any other questions regarding the investigators? So, Mr. Quick, so seeing there are none, so I'm going to, as far as, we have three before us, we can, I guess, we'll, I'm going to start with Ms. Morgan. Is there a preference that you would have?
I have no preference.
Okay, Ms. Vaughn?
I would go with HR and Beyond.
Okay. Ms. Gittens?
Can you conduct?
Sure.
I'm checking soon.
Ms. Javonelli?
I would go with HR and Beyond as well.
Okay, Ms. Patrica?
I can live with anybody but Norfus, given the cost.
Okay. And Ms. Fisher?
I have no preference between the other two.
Okay. And Ms. Gittens?
I will go with the rest of the board. Majority seems to be HR and Beyond, so that's fine with me.
Yeah, and I, I like them as well because I thought that they, they definitely have a lot of information here, plus the fact that that's what they, they do, they investigate. So I would have to agree. So can we take a consensus, then, on HR and Beyond for tonight's meeting? Because this will be coming before us again tonight. Thank you.
Is it good to the order?
Yes, because we definitely need to move forward and get all this stuff, we need to get working.
That's right.
Yes.
It's not good to the order.
Okay, so Attorney Quick, did you?
Yep, I got that, so I'll, for, we'll bring a good cause item, we'll ask for a good cause addition tonight to, for the retention of HR and Beyond, and then we'll also factor in which, which of the complaints.
Thank you. So then, if we can move on to the, the next part of that, which is the potential, oh, we don't even have it on here.
Probably because it's public, but it, there were, I can go through the...
Please.
If you need me to resend the email, I can send you, you guys send the email I'd send around with the information, with the numbers, but there are 10. The, the first is a Lighthouse incident number 2000036294. That is the Lighthouse complaint that we discussed when I was here in March, related to what I'll generally call, summarize the allegation as being disclosure of investigative material. The second is a whistleblower complaint that was filed pursuant to the board's whistleblower policy. It did not come through RSM, so it doesn't have an incident number, but that, that was the whistleblower complaint that we had discussed last time. And the third is a Lighthouse complaint 9031320214882. It was filed, actually, the date filed was March 13th, 2021, and what I will generally summarize the allegations as being false statements and harassing behavior. The next...
May I stop you? For each one of these, can you tell us, as you're going through and you're describing them, can you tell us what our options are? Meaning, is it already being investigated? Is it appropriate for us as a board to refer this up to the Ethics Commission and that kind of thing so we can know as we go?
Yeah, Steph, I think that's a good idea.
Does everybody have, it was, he had sent this out on May 7th, so it has 1 through 9, the numbers on there, so it'd be easier for you all to follow that, too. And I, I don't know if you're able to do that?
I have them.
Okay.
The, so that one, the, the third one I was just discussing, I don't think falls within the Commission on Ethics jurisdiction, so I don't think that, that you would be able to file a, have a board initiate a complaint based upon that. The, the next three, I'll refer to, I guess collectively, because they all involve, the allegations all involve Cypress Lakes High Booster Club issues. Those are incident number 2000040849, then also 200003897, and 200004558. As I understand, that there has been an OIG complaint that has been filed and opened on this issue. So I think that that is currently, as I, I do... So I think that that is currently, as I understand it, that is currently open with OIG. And so that one should be investigated through OIG going forward. Two of them were filed with a person's name attached to it and it matches the same person that filed the OIG complaint. So those are definitely grouped within it. The third one was filed anonymously, so I'm not sure if it's the same person or not, but the allegations are subsumed within the OIG complaint that was filed. So again, I don't know if it's the same person, but the allegations are the same.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, can you repeat, you just said there are three that all deal with Cypress Lake?
Yep.
I didn't follow the long numbers, but on your email...
Is that number four, five, and six?
Which numbers are they?
I'm going through the same orders. If you have the email that I sent, there's numbers four, five, and six in my email.
Four, five, and six. That's what I was thinking. I wanted to make sure I got it right. And those are already, they're up there now, OIG. Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, there's a complaint that's been opened with OIG. Number seven in my email, it's the case number ending in 44618. There are aspects of that, so that relates to what I'll call allegations of improper actions leading into an ethics investigation. There are aspects of that that can be, that fall within the jurisdiction of the Commission on Ethics, to the extent that there was confidential information that was shared to a third party, that would fall within the Commission on Ethics. The issue there, though, is that is also an anonymous whistleblower complaint. So it also falls within your whistleblower policy. And I guess I should specify, your whistleblower policy only applies to employees, the way it's written. So anybody who's not a district employee does not fall within the whistleblower policy. So if you have a member of the public, they don't fall within that. So that's why I mentioned that. I'm not sure who the employee is. They filed it anonymously, but they do state affirmatively that they are an employee of the district. So that would fall within your whistleblower policy as well. Although there is, pursuant to your policy, there's no protection extended because obviously you don't know who the person is that filed it. And there's a different level of what I'll call scrutiny in terms of whether the allegations rise to the level because you need to make sure that there's enough information in there that you can actually investigate it since you don't know who the person is to follow up. So I mention that just because, you know, your whistleblower policy does have you investigating that. So I think a portion of that could be, could fall within the Commission on Ethics, but ultimately you also would need to investigate the full extent of that. And under the circumstances, it would need to be, the board would need to vote to confirm that full investigation as well as it would need to go to an outside investigator, just based upon the allegations and the facts in that one and the parties. Number eight, which is a Lighthouse complaint ending in 39306, that would, could fall within the Commission on Ethics jurisdiction. I say could because the allegations generally are receipt of a gift in excess of $50. I know that there's a school board statute that talks about the $50 gift limit. The Commission on Ethics investigates based upon the state law, which is $100. So that's why I say it could fall within that. Certainly, the allegations are in excess of 50, which means it could be above 100, but doesn't necessarily. But that would definitely fall, if it is, would definitely fall within the Commission on Ethics and I think would be appropriate if you all wanted to have them investigate it. The, number nine, the Lighthouse complaint, case number ending in 14882, that one, yes, I think would fall within the Commission on Ethics jurisdiction. And then number 10, which is the one that was filed either on Friday or Saturday, it is a, alleges, it's a Lighthouse number ending in 48126 alleging sunshine law violations, I would say. That is really a state attorney jurisdiction, the state attorney is really who investigates sunshine law violations. So in terms of an external entity outside of somebody you would retain, that would be the state attorney, not necessarily, not the Commission on Ethics.
Okay, can I, may I ask, okay, so seven, eight, and nine, okay, so we know one and two is something that we have to do through the outside, correct? The four, five, and six, OIG, we're gonna wait for them. You would advise us to wait for what they say on that. Seven, eight, and nine could be commissions on ethics. Who then would be that, who then would have to send that to them if we're saying that this is, I'm just asking a question because I'm not sure where this all fits in. And then the other one is the state's attorney. So can you help me with this?
For the Commission on Ethics, they don't, they don't take referrals or anonymous complaints. So either the complainant could certainly file it with the Commission on Ethics, but the board could vote to, it's not referring, they don't take that, but would vote to initiate a complaint with the Commission on Ethics and it would be based upon the complaint that you have received, basically. So the board then would be the complainant, although it would be, you know, via somebody else. But that's just because of the way the Commission on Ethics takes complaints or is willing to take complaints. The State Attorney's Office, I think you could just refer it over to them. I don't think you have to, the board would have to initiate anything, but certainly the complainant could, you know, reach out to the State Attorney's Office as well.
Okay, because that's what I, that's my concern, because I know everybody's always talking about, you know, policing each other. So when it comes to those certain ones, if they're not going to the investigation, then that would be up to us to say, okay, this is what we want to do. We want to send this up to the commissioner. Is that what you...
You would, you would vote to, you would authorize the initiation of a complaint on behalf of the board for the, on the basis of this, the allegations set forth and complaints X, Y, and Z.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
No, I'm confused because based on what you said, it's as if some of these were done by board members against board members. And are we supposed to be filing Lighthouse complaints on each other? Or if we are complaining, filing complaint, wouldn't it go up to Tallahassee?
So I don't know who filed anonymous complaints, but I'm not aware of any complaints where it's a board member filed against a board member. Obviously, I can't speak to any anonymous complaints, though.
Well, and if, let's say the number 10, the sunshine one was done by someone outside and we know, or the company HR says that that has to be done through another venue, through the state attorney, wouldn't you then inform the person that filed it that this is the case and that they would have to then forward it and file it wherever?
Yes, if you know the person or certainly if you, even in, I don't know if RSM keeps contact information for anonymous complainants, but certainly the board, if the board does not vote to initiate their own, they could encourage the person to file their own if they wanted to or if they're listening.
One last question. How many of these are anonymous?
I think you said one, right?
There's a couple. Number one was filed anonymously. Number four is anonymous. And seven and eight are anonymous.
Oh. I don't know. It really gives me angst to think about paying someone to look into something that's anonymous and, I don't know. It just kind of bothers me to do that.
And for those, I don't, for seven, I think, I would say seven has enough, at least, backup information under the whistleblower policy. And again, I'm not speaking to the merits or the ultimate decision, but I'm just, in terms of, is there enough information in the complaint under your whistleblower policy that you could initiate a complaint? And I think probably, it's close, but probably. But given the nature, I think you would have to, it would have to be, the board would have to vote for at least one of the people that the complaint has been made against. The board would have to approve it because it is a board member if it wants to. But like I said, it's close and we don't really have any way to reach out to that person, but they do mention other people who purportedly have knowledge. But in terms of...
Was that number eight?
That is number eight, yes.
Oh, eight? I thought it was seven. Because when...
No, I'm sorry, number seven. Number seven.
Because eight is extremely vague.
Eight is not a whistleblower. Pardon me?
As I said, eight is extremely vague. There is not follow-up, there's not resource information, et cetera. But I can talk with you.
Yeah, and eight does, as far as I know, it does not fall under the whistleblower policy because I'm not aware that that was filed by an employee. So that would be a standard one and you wouldn't fall under the same, your whistleblower policy has a little bit different, different language in it than just a standard investigation.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for that clarification. Ms. Fisher?
Mr. Quick, in the event of anonymous complaints, are we required to take it any further or do anything about it?
No, unless it falls under your whistleblower policy as it relates to employees and it's, and you feel, and it's sufficient to meet the language that it precede. If it involves a board member, absolutely not. You guys are, you guys choose if you want to investigate or not. But, so that's why I say with the board member, it's a little bit different than it is with an employee.
So then, is that something that you will do for us? Make a determination about which of these we must move forward on? And those anonymous ones that don't involve an employee, we don't have to take any further?
I, yes, I think that number two, it does have to be investigated because of your, the way that your whistleblower policy is written.
Mm-hmm.
number seven also falls within your whistleblower policy. it, if it meets, if it provides sufficient corroborating evidence to justify the commencement of an investigation, that's what the language is used in your board policy, then I do think it needs to be, it does need to be investigated as long as it does. Now, I say it's close, I don't know if you have it in front of you, I say it's close because it doesn't have a significant, it has some detail, not a significant amount, but it does have names of people that could be contacted for an investigation. So that's why I say it's close. I would generally tend to err on the side of caution because of the way it's come through with, for a whistleblower, just because of that. I would tend to err on the side of caution, do the investigation, but it's close.
Okay, and that one could go to the Ethics Commission if we vote on it?
A portion of that, a portion of that could, dealing with, if there was any sharing of confidential information. Again, it's not 100% clear that there was confidential information allegedly shared, but if that's one of the allegations, that would bring it within the jurisdiction of the Commission on Ethics.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Patrica?
So I think it's obvious we need to investigate number two. I would recommend that we send all issues up to the COE that qualify and we send the other one to the State Attorney's Office because it qualifies. A lot of the information in these complaints has been repeated, allegations have been made by each other at the table, by public comment. I believe it's essential for an outside third party to come in and look at this stuff and set the record straight. And if we have the ability to send it up to the COE, whether it's anonymous or not, we as a board should do that. And the same is true for the SAO. I don't even know if that one's anonymous or not. No, it's not. Number 10, let's send it to the Attorney's, the State Attorney's Office and have them make their investigation, give us a report, and then we can finally move on.
And for the whistleblower one, number seven, there's two things I wanted to, I, when I said that the, that one I think does need to be investigated also under the language, even with the board policy. I apologize for that. I was thinking it wasn't whistleblower, but whistleblower does say, "Any complaint of retaliation against a school board member shall be given to an external investigator for review." It doesn't, you guys don't define external investigator, though, so I don't see why the Commission on Ethics couldn't be considered an external investigator. I don't see that defined in your whistleblower policy. So I don't see why a referral to, at least for that one, because it could fall within the jurisdiction, I don't see why the Commission on Ethics could not be considered the external investigator.
And if I recall correctly, the COE is already investigating the underlying complaint there. So this subject is already with the COE. So it makes sense to add this to it and have them complete the process.
The underlying complaint, yes.
Okay, Ms. Jivinelli, did you have your hand up?
No.
I'm sorry, I thought you did. Ms. Gittens?
Okay, then I am concerned about the one ending in 306, and I'm trying to say this tactfully. It was anonymous, it ends in 306. I numbered, is it number eight?
Yep, I see it.
It was anonymous, it's about a board member, there was not a lot of information substantiating it, and I would not feel that we should send that to investigations further in Tallahassee, I forget the name. But I just think an anonymous is, for one thing, it's a waste of time, and if everybody would look at it, they would see there's very little information that would corroborate any of this. And then also the fact that there's the conflict of the $50 and the $100 that were, anyway, I could go on, but I won't. I think that it's frivolous.
Ms. Patrica?
I could make that argument for all of the ones in which I'm named, but I'm not making that argument because I believe that for transparency purposes and for us to be able to move on as a body, each one of these should be individually addressed, facts gathered, reports made to the board, and then, again, we can move on.
Not anonymously.
There are several in here that are anonymous against me.
Ms. Morgan?
I ask that you start polling the board on each one.
Attorney Quick, can you please assist on this as far as which, the ones that we absolutely have to do with the outside that got us here to this particular situation that we're at right now is number two and number...
And number seven, although I don't, I'm not, I don't see why...
Number seven just came in, so in the very beginning, the two cases...
The ones that you guys had determined before were number one and two on the list. Those were the ones that we had discussed in March.
But now we're saying number one, number two we must do.
Yep.
Because it's a whistleblower. Number one, we...
You can do, and if you do it, it needs to be authorized by the board and should be done as an external, for an external investigation. But number one is not, is not, you don't have to.
So the ones that we must do right now that we know for sure that has to be done, which is number, taking my glasses off, I can't see, which is two. Correct? Because you just said seven could be sent.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so the only one right now that must be done through another outside source would be number two.
Yes, based on the language of your policy, yeah.
Based on the language. So can we have consensus on number two, the whistleblower complaint, that we have that put on the agenda?
Now, is that the, ending in eight, two?
It is, ending, no, it's just whistleblower complaint, number two.
Yeah, that one did not come in through RSM, so it didn't have a case number and I just wrote it as a whistleblower complaint. I just wrote it as a whistleblower complaint.
Oh, that's where I'm confused.
Number two. So can I please have consensus on that one?
On...
On just number two?
But...
That we must have, we have to have that done. It's required that we have that done. So, did you, is that, yes?
I mean, if you're saying we have to, I don't have a choice.
Yes, okay. I just wanted to make sure because you can still say no.
And is that through...
That would be through the people, the outside.
HR and beyond.
Correct.
So that's what you're saying is external, Mr. Quick?
External.
Correct.
Yes.
I have a question. If I may. Attorney Quick, so number one is related to number two. Does it make more sense for us to send that one up to the COE or to have that included in the investigation for number two?
You know, I think it's really up to you guys. I hate to go to, but I mean, it could fall within the jurisdiction of the COE, yes. But I hear what you're saying and I, there is some overlap, obviously, between one and two. We had discussed that back in March. So I think, I think you could do it either way. I think you, if the board still wants to investigate that. Again, the board is the one who has to choose that because of the facts and allegations and circumstances. I think you could do it either way.
Okay, so I guess, is there an appetite to include number one and two with number two, ending in 6294 incident? Is there an appetite for that?
They're about the same thing.
They have some of the information in the complaint one, kind of like overlaps the other complaints, the whistleblower.
Yeah, they stem from, my understanding is they kind of stem from the same root allegation, I guess we'll call it.
Root allegation.
And I'm named in number one, I recuse myself.
So can we put them all together, get it done with and over with?
And that's external or...
External, external, with HR. HR and beyond. The external.
I know.
Okay, so it passes. So we'll pull those two together and just get it done with and move on. Okay. And then number three, I'm sorry, I don't, I can't remember what number three was.
Commission on Ethics.
Number three, I didn't see anything there that would fall within the Commission on Ethics.
Okay, so...
So that is, it involves a school board member. Sorry, Ms. Patrica.
It also has, it has to do with one and two. They are related.
Yeah, they do seem to have some sort of connection there as well.
So I would say include that with one and two. And I'm named and I will vote to investigate myself.
So can I, when they are doing, can I, this is just probably a crazy thing to ask. So when they are investigating, instead of them doing all separate because they have similarities and things together, will they just pull it all together as one?
Yes.
I would encourage them to do their investig, I mean, if you're going to interview somebody, I would encourage them to interview them about all three, if they have a knowledge of all three, instead of meeting with them three separate times. I think that it's going to be more efficient, it's going to be more cost efficient, and it's going to be less intrusive on the people who are being investigated.
Just consolidate it.
So I anticipate they will, but if, I will stress that as well. I think that that's...
So if I may, I'm going to go back again on putting together one, two, and three for outside sources to investigate. Thank you. So it'll be the three of them. Seven we don't need to do, he said.
No, no, do we get all seven?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Attorney Quick, that will be, we'll consolidate all three of those.
Yes.
One, two, and three, okay.
Four, five, and six, as I understand, was part of an OIG complaint. I'm sorry, I'm not close to the microphone. Was part of an OIG complaint that was filed, or, well, the allegations are the same as in an OIG complaint. I'm not sure if, what the status is, if that has been closed. But certainly what the board could do, if it has been, the board could say, either we don't want to investigate it and we want to rely on the OIG, or yes, we want to investigate it, come back to us, or yes, we want to investigate it and have that trigger if and when the OIG investigation closes. That way, we don't have to come back and you guys don't have to consider it again. I guess those are kind of the three options you could do there.
And is four, five, and six, and then, four, five, and six, and nine, and nine, they all have kind of like the same information in those as well? All of those collectively?
Nine, I don't think nine stemmed from the Cypress Slakes Booster Club issues. At least the way I read it, I didn't see that. But maybe you guys know the intricacies better than I do, but I didn't see anything, I didn't see that that was part of the OIG complaint as I saw it.
It's part of the OIG complaint, but I think it has some of the same information in those as the other ones?
Yeah, it's possible, but I mean, I'm just, when I'm looking at them, I don't see it on its face, but it's possible because it's...
I think that's part of one, two, and three. I don't think it's part of four, five, and six.
Yeah, number nine definitely is part of an investigation of some sorts. I've just, I'm not clear based on the facts as to which one it is.
Okay.
I think it would be added to one, two, and three.
Okay, so four, five, so if we're going to four, five, and six right now with the OIG complaints, and I guess I can ask Ms. DePree Bruno on this, if we still have complaints out there on this?
Yeah, she should have, she should have, if she has knowledge, if it's closed or open, then, yeah.
If it's, if they are all closed or...
The allegations in four, five, and six were referred back to the district to do with it what the district felt was appropriate. The original OIG complaint relating to those same issues were closed, but then there was another one that was referred back to the district.
So that would not be, waiting on the OIG would not be an option in law.
Okay. Ms. Patrica?
And if I recall correctly, you know, a couple of things have gotten in the way in terms of taking the board's attention to other, more important matters like Dr. Atkins' retirement. But I believe we're waiting on a presentation from staff regarding new practices, a new manual, and how we're going to move forward before we make any decisions regarding action on four, five, and six. I think that was how we left it the last time we discussed this issue. Does anybody else remember that the same way?
True. Ms. Fisher?
No, I was just agreeing. I remembered that, yes.
Sorry, Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I really feel strongly that the whole Booster Club thing needs to come to a resolution, a better resolution than what we have out there right now. And we've been waiting a very long time to get the presentation by, I'm not sure who all, Mr. LaRosa maybe, and the people that were involved with editing, changing out. At one point, we had talked about, and I don't want to take this off the table, RSM getting involved. And I know it sounds like it's a little off topic, but in reality, I don't see it that way because these are three legitimate complaints with a lot of information. And I think we, at some point, we need to make a definitive investigation on the Booster Club. I think we need to get the reports from the group that's been revising, but it's been months, I believe. And, you know, we're spending a lot of money here for these other things, and we reject it in some of the other schools. And I really think that whenever we do this, we really need to get this, the Cypress Slate, the whole Booster thing resolved. And I'm concerned that it hasn't come back to us. I'm concerned that we have an opportunity here to do an outside investigation, to put it to rest once and for all, one way or another. Because if there is wrongdoing, who to us as a school board and a school district for not fixing it and not respecting our volunteers? So I'm not sure what the appetite here is on the board to put this out to HR and beyond while we're spending the money. We reject it spending the money before. Not for kicking the can down the road, frankly.
Okay. Mr. Quick, can you tell me, is there, because I believe there was an audit that was done on here, there were several things done on here. So is that something that we could have HR, I feel like I keep saying HR block, HR, look at what has taken place and come to a conclusion, right, wrong, or indifferent, of where we need to go with this? And then, and just let it be done?
Yeah, I mean, certainly you guys could refer and ask them to take a look at the audit.
Because that's three items right there.
Yeah. And to see, I think that that's a fair thing you guys could do, yes.
Can we take, you have two.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes, so regarding the Cypress Booster Club situation, I know that I had made several requests, and I think it's on our list of workshops to come. And I think Mrs. Javonelli had also made a request that we take another look at that. And I think that's exactly why we have RSM, an independent auditor. That's why the state made it mandatory for districts to have that entity as an employee of the board just for cases like this. So I'm hoping that we can move forward then with taking another look at that and really determining which of those many accusations and all of the bookkeeping is actually accurate.
Well, and what I think that has to be done, too, is that because of the fact that Booster Clubs are separate entities, so there's so much other things that are going on with this. So that's something that, I'm not sure where that lies at.
Yeah, so would we, yeah, if I may just finish. So we've been waiting a couple of months now, and I don't think that just rewriting the manual is going to solve the problem. I think we need to determine exactly what the problem is. And then having a manual that is widely used in training and people are informed of their responsibilities under...
And I'm going to go to Ms. Morgan.
Well, I have to respectfully disagree. I think the matter has been investigated. I think it is an external matter. There are limits on what we can do legally, and I think that our responsibility is to make certain that we have a process and procedure in place for employees so we can hold them accountable for any role they might have in this external process. So I see, no need, there was, there may have been negligence, but I don't think the investigation showed that there was any intent to defraud or to do anything. So why would we want to investigate it again? We know there were mistakes. We know that there were problems. We've asked to correct the manual so that everybody can be held to the same standard. I think pursuing this is truly a waste of taxpayer money.
I'm going to go this way, and I'm coming back this way. Ms. Javonelli, you had?
Well, unfortunately, we've, we're at the point where we have 10 complaints, and I think that we can't pick and choose at this point. I think we need to get them done and handle that, handle the issues as they arise from the investigation. So I'm with Ms. Patrica. I think we need to just get it done. So I'm, I think they all need to be done and addressed at this point in time, unfortunately. It's, we've let this, we've kicked this can down the road, and now it's totally exploded and on fire. And we need to address it and where everyone knows that we've done that. And that's the only way to move beyond it, is to be held accountable and identify the issues and make the corrections and move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
So four, five, and six have already been investigated. These are the same complaints that we've had over and over and over and over again. And Dr., if I may, Dr. Atkins, when can we plan to hear from staff regarding training for Booster Clubs going forward, changes made to the, all of that, please?
I'll get back with you on that, find out. It should be real soon. My understanding, the manual has been, has already pretty much been done, and they have training ready and in place.
So if we, I think that the discussion was, we asked, we direct the superintendent to refresh the manual and put together training and then report back to the board. And you call it kicking the can down the road. I call it doing the business of the district. These are outside entities. Things like interim superintendent hires, I believe, take precedence over investigating outside entities and having staff come forward and report to us on outside entities. So...
I do have a little bit more information. Thank you to our Chief of Staff. They are ready to go. They, right now, have the financial advisory looking at the manual and just waiting on their feedback.
Great. So if we could just do what we had originally agreed to do, which was wait for staff to come back and report to us, and then if the board figures out that they need further investigation, then we can do a further investigation. But this, this is not what we agreed to do.
And I, I'll jump in really quick with the Financial, Finance Advisory Committee. They asked to, as the committee asked to look at it, because a lot of those gentlemen that sit on that board, maybe some of the women, but I just know that the gentleman had spoke, they actually sit on their Booster Clubs and they're their audit, auditors for their Booster Clubs. And they definitely wanted to see what the manual looks like. So they do have it, and I know RSM had sent us a quote of what they would charge us. And Ms. DePree Bruno's going to chime in on that really quick, and then I'll...
I have a question, but never.
Just for clarification, the manual is completed. It was sent to RSM. Because of the scope of work that RSM has, which requires it to come back to the board for the board's permission to be able to move forward, nothing has been done on RSM's side. RSM then sent a scope of work. It was actually put on either a briefing, I believe it was, to be discussed, but that was around the time that we have the workshop, I believe it was, with regard to the superintendent search, one of the first ones, so that got pushed back. So that's why there was delay. And then now, because of that delay, it has now gone to the Finance Committee so they can take a look at it so we can move this forward. So it's, we're getting tied up a little bit with regards to RSM's ability to advise with regards to these Lighthouse complaints and anything else that should pop up for them to review, such as the Booster Club manual.
Thank you. Ms. Kittens?
Well, my concern is that when the Booster Club issue came up, it came before the board. It was voted down to do, to spend the money to do an investigation. So, you know, I beg to differ with some of my colleagues. There was not an investigation done. It was decided we would not spend the money to do that. So it's not that it's been investigated and all this is done. It was decided to just leave it and to, I guess, see what happens with the, with the new guidelines and all that. But the new guidelines are talking about what's going to happen going forward. It's not talking about any issues that happened before that they keep, you know, saying to us there was an issue here that has not been resolved. And because we, as a board, decided we would not investigate it any further, it's still sitting there. And OIG is saying it's something that needs to be done by us. We have the company, we've decided to hire the company to let, to let them look over it and see, is there anything that needs to be done further? I just feel that we should do that. There has not been an investigation.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, the whole reason that I brought it up is that when this first came to us, the board did not, we didn't get an approval to go ahead and spend money. The initial, if I recall, the initial quote was, all of us felt it was high, but they had, they said they could reduce their scope of work and do pointed investigations or audits of certain other Booster Clubs. And at that time, we, in addition to saying we're going to wait for the manual to be updated, we said we want to revisit it. So we didn't just... So we didn't just dismiss it, we wanted to revisit it. And this has been, somebody said, on fire for a long time. And if we're not going to do it with, and I'm not going to count on what we're going to do down the road, because I can see this can is still rolling along, burning and gathering other cans as it goes along, because this, this is truly hurtful to us as a district when we treat our volunteers this way. I've made that point before. So I'm on record as we either do it now with H&R, HR and Beyond, which is my preference at this point, because I don't believe that it's going to come, the rest of it's going to come to us in a timely manner. And as far as priorities, absolutely, we are looking for an interim and then a full, full-time, not full-time, but permanent superintendent. But what happens to people, people like us that are not, we're not hourly employees, we're employees. And if you have a lot of stuff to do, you just put more meetings on the schedule and you do it. And it's all important. I mean, you can't say that one thing is more important. Well, yeah, there are a few things, but no, we've got to do all of it, and that's what we're here to do. And there's some times when we have a little bit of slack in our schedule, and there are times like now that the schedule is full, totally full. But we've got to do it, and we can't sacrifice one thing for another. Those are my opinion on this.
And I'm going to go to Ms. Giovinelli, and then Ms.
And I just want to remind, that RSM's recommendation was to investigate. That was the recommendation. We just didn't do it. So I think that we're, keep kicking the can again. So I just think that we just need to get all 10 of these done and call it a day, and then, and deal with the recommendations. We need recommendations on making what happens after all this. So I think that's vital.
Mr. Prey Bruno, did you, no? Okay. Ms. Patrica?
It was not a recommendation. We asked them what it would cost for them to conduct an audit and an investigation, and they came back with a price. They didn't recommend an investigation. I will go back to the harm that this does to our volunteers. I agree with you. And putting our volunteers, all of them, through this kind of scrutiny for mistakes, honest human error, is very, very harmful. And I'm hearing from people in the community that there's a desire to not serve on boosters because of the kinds of oversight that's being put in place and because of the kinds of accusations that are being made. Did we have an investigation? No. We had an internal audit that showed we had problems. We're asking for staff to address those problems, to bring the information back to us. I don't understand, I don't understand the desire to hurt people who were volunteering for us through some kind of an outside investigation. It seems like a tremendous waste of district resources in order to do that, and I don't understand how it moves us forward at all. We know what was broken. The internal audit shows us exactly what was broken. The internal audit was accepted by the Office of the Inspector General, and the Office of the Inspector General has said, this matter is closed. The reason why the can is on fire is because a group of people continue to come forward to every board meeting and continue to send us emails, and we're paying attention to that. Instead of serving the entire community, which is our job, it is not our job to serve three or four people who feel like they were wronged, it is our job to serve the entire community. And I believe the best way to serve the entire community is to make sure we have good training in place and a good manual in place. That's what I have learned from this process. I will not be supporting the expenditure of any, any dollars on this issue unless and until the superintendent brings forward a plan, and I'm unhappy with that plan, and I have concerns based on that plan.
May I ask you to call for consensus to see whether or not we go for?
Again, no, I hear you, but Mr. Quick, can you, you said that this group can do, look over to see what, if anything, was, needs to be done more to make this, make this work?
Yes, if, yes, if that's the direction given by the board, then yes, they can do, they can do that as well.
Looking at the, what has already been done, and then they can look at that and say, yes, we do need to move forward with something else, or we do not?
Yes. I think they can, that's fair to have them look and do, as part of that, and come with a recommendation, yes.
Is that doable for the board, for them to look at this over? And anything that goes, coincides with that, on these numbers, put this all together and have them look at that to see if there's something further that needs to be done or should have been done, and move on with that? Do we have consensus on that? Okay, five to two, so it will carry. Okay, so then the others, seven, eight, nine, and 10, seven, eight, and nine.
Yeah, and I wanted to follow up on the Commission on Ethics issue, because it dawned on me while we're sitting here, and I apologize for not raising before, that a complaint with the Commission on Ethics needs to be filed, it's a sworn complaint. So the, I would, while the board could file the complaint on behalf of someone, I want to mention that, because I want to be, I want, I would caution the board, because obviously there are allegations in there that you are presumably not, as a board, aware of the So I did, I did want to mention that, and I apologize for not, for not thinking of that before. But that, that's something that, that I don't want to open up a can of worms.
What is your recommendations then?
Pardon me?
What would be your recommendation?
If there, for, that's, that's dealing with the ones going forward, where I did talk about that it would, could be, fall within the jurisdiction of the Commission on Ethics. I think in terms of that, my recommendation would be, if the board is not going to investigate it itself, that it best or recommend that the complainant file the complaint with the Commission on Ethics, if the board feels that that's a more appropriate jurisdiction for that to be, be done in, as opposed to the board doing it, and I apologize for that.
Ms. Kittens?
Well, okay, so are we talking still about the four, five, and six?
No, we're not. We're on seven, eight, and nine.
Okay. Well, then, my concern, and no, I am not concerned about being named, that's not the issue. If, I don't know if Attorney Brunel has shown the complaint ending in 306 to the other board members, but the fact is, and I have seen it and read through it, and the fact that it is extremely vague, it is anonymous, there is not, I am not worried about it going through, that's not the thing, but it's, to me, is very frivolous. If you all want to do something a little bit stronger and do it better, then fine, but I don't think this one has enough meat on the bones to even spend the time. So.
Four, that's number eight?
Number eight.
Okay. And then, again, for seven, eight, and nine, who would initiate that complaint?
First, we have to decide if we're going to send it.
Yeah, but I want to know who would it be, one of us that would have to do that? That's what I want to know.
We'd have to decide.
I'm sorry.
I was going to say, seven and eight are anonymous, so we wouldn't know who, unless RSM has their contact information, we wouldn't know who it was. Number nine, we do know the name of the person who submitted it. So if the, if the board believes that the Commission on Ethics is a better place for these as opposed to an external investigation, at least number nine, we could reach out, or I, you know, certainly I could, or whoever the board asks could reach out to the person. And then maybe if RSM has contact information for seven or eight, you know, through the lighthouse system, then maybe they could reach out. Otherwise, the option is do nothing, or, or, you know, not investigate, or investigate.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
So I think number nine has to do with one, two, and three. I think, I had brought that up earlier. I think the names are the same.
Mr. Quick, can you validate that? If number nine is part of one, two, and three?
Let me just check the names really quick.
That would take that off.
Certainly, it looks like, it looks like it could be, yes.
Okay, so.
Just based upon the limited information we have.
So should we add that to one, two?
So could we add one, two, three, and nine, then?
Yes.
Collectively together? Is that agreed with everyone?
And then for seven and eight, Attorney Quick, can we verify in a sworn statement that we have received these complaints and send it up to the COE that way? Instead of verifying the truth of the matters contained in the complaint, the fact that we received them and how they received them, and leave them up, leave it up to the COE to contact the whistleblower hotline and determine whether there's any identifying information associated with it?
You could, you could try. I don't think that they would take it, because they don't take referrals, and that, I think that they would probably look at that as a referral. But certainly, you could try, and if, if it failed, then, then you could, you know, elect to do something, something else.
Okay, so I think I'm named in seven. Can I file a complaint against myself?
You could. I mean, you'd be swearing to the facts of the complaint, though, that.
Okay. It's just the issues in seven have come up over and over and over and over again. I'd really like to lay it to rest.
You don't want to, I'm sorry, you don't want to file a complaint against yourself.
I understand. I'm just trying to get it out there that I want this to finally be over.
So can I, and I have to apologize, because I do see the time, we are really going much over. Ms. Kittens, go ahead.
Just one more thing about eight. When I looked at the complaint, the, there is a name of an individual, but there, when you checked all the boxes, there was no substantiating evidence, they did not want to be contacted, there was no contact information, there was just the name and, and the allegation, and it was, you know, I, anyway, I just think that that's frivolous.
So going back to seven, because we moved nine up with the others, so going back to seven and eight, do we have an appetite, well, an appetite to Ms. Prey Bruno?
Mr. Quick, can you please tell me if the one that ends in 306, do you feel that it's legally sufficient to even move forward with anything?
I mean, certainly, there is a statute governing gifts. There's an allegation in terms of the amount in excess of $50, and there is the name of a person who purportedly partook in that. So I think you could, there's enough there, you could actually conduct an investigation. Again, I'm not speaking to the merits or the validity of any of it, but there's at least enough there. You know, certainly, if it was just an anonymous complaint, saying this person had a lunch for $50, in excess of $50, you know, that would, that would not be sufficient at all. You know, again, there's information there that you could, you could investigate to determine whether it's the veracity of it.
But can I say the, may I speak? Go ahead. The only information was the person's name. There were no receipts, there were no, there was nothing else. And they did not provide anything else.
Correct. The only allegation was a person X had lunch in excess of $50 with, with a named individual. And certainly, you know, I don't mean to be saying that you, there are any number of exceptions to why, you know, to being able to have lunch with somebody that would not violate a, any gifts regulations. So I don't mean to be saying that just because somebody alleges this, that, number one, it took place, number two, that even if it did, that it was inappropriate in any way. I was just responding to Ms. Prey Bruno's question that.
And the incorrect part is that it actually had an incorrect location. It said one location, and it was in a different city. So.
Ms. Patrica?
So I say we send seven and eight to HR Services, or whatever the name of that company is. Can we take a consensus on that?
Then that's investigating ourselves.
Again, in the spirit of transparency and in putting an end to these consistent complaints that are coming before the board, yes.
So would we do seven, eight, and 10?
No, 10 goes to the S.I.A.
Can you please split them?
So could we, I'm sorry, say again?
Do them separately, please? Seven, and then eight?
Okay, so do we have consensus on seven, moving seven forward to H&R and Beyond for investigation? Ms. Fisher?
What's wrong with seven? Sorry.
What's wrong with what?
What's the, I don't, I just don't understand what's the issue of seven. I was just curious.
Well, no, we're just moving it forward for investigation.
Right.
Oh, you're saying with Ms. Fisher?
There's some that disagree.
I'm sorry, I thought in our discussion, seven and eight were going to go to the Ethics Commission.
That's what we said.
Yeah, that was where I, after thinking about it further, they require a sworn statement. So I would caution the board not to do that, because you're swearing to the veracity of the allegations as opposed to just referring to it. So certainly, it can be done, but then there are, it's attaching potential issues for the board. I don't want to, I don't want to guide you that way.
Okay, so with, so then, if I may, go back to seven again. Can I please say thumbs up, or that we move this forward to H&R? Okay? It passes. Now, we have number eight. Number eight, as well, is the same thing. Do we want to move that forward too, to get it all done and over with? Want clarity? Okay. And, okay, it passes. Six to, six to one. Now, we have one left, which is number 10, Sunshine, the Sunshine Law State Attorney. How does that, who does that?
That, I mean, certainly, I could, I could reach out to the state attorney's office and.
And then inform us back on that one?
If the board wants to refer it, I can do that. And again, I don't want to speak to the veracity of it, because obviously, there are communications that can be had between board members that are not covered by the Sunshine Law. You know, somebody says, how are you doing? Certainly, that's not covered by the, by the Sunshine Law. So, you know, when I, when I, I just want to caution, more, because I know people are listening, that when I'm saying that it can be referred, I'm not talking about the veracity of, that'll be up for the investigators to determine.
So just thumbs up for everyone who agrees that Attorney Quick reaches out to the state's attorney's office? Okay, seven, and that's it. So Attorney Quick, is there anything else? I think that we've covered everything on this that we needed to, correct?
Yeah, as far as I'm aware, and I can get out of your hair and let you guys get on to the, you know, the good business.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
All right, thank you. And I'll be here tonight for this issue, so if you, I mean, if you guys want to deal with the consent agenda, I'll be here shortly. If you want to have a discussion, I'll be here as well, so.
Perfect, thank you. Mr. Prey Bruno?
I just want to be very clear with regards to four, five, and six. What are you requesting be done? Because I just want to, I just want to make sure we're very clear on that, because I can see issues coming from that. What exactly, so that he can put that in the retainer appropriately? What exactly do you want in four, five, and six?
That, did you understand what we were asking for?
Yeah, I'll say my understanding, I was also going to go back and look at the tape so I could write it down all accurately, but my understanding was that it was being referred to them to look at, to make a determination of what, if anything, should be done for a potential future, a potential investigation or not, and they would come back with a recommendation.
After they just looked at everything?
Is that correct?
Yes. Correct. Thank you. Okay. Again, thank you so much. And Ms. Vaughn, I'm turning this back over to you, and I apologize to everyone who said you're patiently.
Thank you. What we're going to do is, because these two gentlemen have been waiting for a long time, going to have the pre-briefing on adult code of conduct, and the presenters here are Mr. Todd Everly, Senior Director. And the presenters here are Mr. Todd Everly, Senior Director of the Technical Colleges, and Mr. Brian Mangan, Director of Constituent Services. And after this presentation, we will take a five-minute break before we go to the last part of the meeting. So, gentlemen?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Atkins, and Council. Thanks for the opportunity to discuss the proposed code of conduct for adult students for the fiscal year 2021 and 2022. We sat down with our leadership teams at the post-secondary and also Director Davis of our CTE programs, sat down with all of our staff, even some of our students, to see where we're at, look at our strengths, our opportunities, what our weaknesses could be. And we really only came what was proposed in your packet. Is on the cover page was the proper listing of the board members and the new fiscal year coming forward. Let me give you a little bit more information on that and how we derived from that. We sat down with our leadership team at all the schools and kind of came up with the top five infractions, referrals that we see at the post-secondary sites. And when I mention this, this is minor sites, very few that these happen. But just to go over so you can have a little bit better understanding of what we see in our academic world for post-secondary, you would see infractions of insubordination, tardiness, cellphone use while on the campus, while you're in the classroom, minor safety violations, and cheating. And again, these are adult learners. We try to really onboard them, and especially for the programs that they are taking, to get them ready for career-ready, for interview, job interviews. And we tell them, "You're on audition here to get a recommendation from us to a job." So we give them verbal warnings in the beginning, and then after that, we'll sit down with leadership and with them and the appropriate people to sit down and talk to them about, you know, going over those policies. And if the pattern continues, just like in the real world, there'll be a suspension from that program. So we give them all those opportunities. Additionally, every orientation, no matter what school they're going to, what program, they are afforded the opportunity, they sit down with our leadership teams and our career counselors to go over the code of conduct and the student handbooks that are assigned to each of those schools. On top of that, if you're at the public service academy, you sign that commitment because of the variety of the programs we offer. The others don't have a signature page, but they acknowledge on a survey, and it's also on their websites. And additionally, what I wanted to just to mention to you is that we had another set of eyes. We were very fortunate this year with the co-accreditation, which is the Council of Occupational Education, Cape Coral Technical College. I want to give a little shout out to Director Charlie Peace and also Director Mangan, who was sitting next to me in the beginning, got Charlie up to speed quickly. He was thrown right into getting that technical college up to speed and reaccredited successfully. That happened. Part of that is, as you know, that they review all of our policies. And part of that policy process is looking at how we deal with students and behavior, and they found nothing wrong with how we are doing our program. They're saying it's pretty much a national standard of what we do. And they also recommended to continue doing as we have been in the past. So I do not have any further, but I stand ready for any questions if you have any.
Ms. Vaughn, it's your turn. You've got the floor.
Go, Ms. Vaughn, please. Thank you. All right, now that I'm snapping my mind that I'm back doing this, before I ask anything, board members, do you have any questions? Okay, my only question is, I know you do have some dual-enrolled students, right?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so do the dual-enrolled students, when they're in the college facilities, do they come under this or do they come under their homeschool?
Yeah, they come underneath the secondary school and depending on what that is, we refer them back to that because they are still high school students until they graduate. We actually have that in the code of conduct under Page One as adult students, and that is covered in the very, the third paragraph on the top.
Okay, I missed it, so...
I'm sorry.
Oh, it's my fault.
Yeah, it's all high school students that tend the adult, it's under Page One.
Okay. All right, so, yeah, because there are some differences in penalties on things.
And with them still being technically assigned as a dual-enrolled student through that school, that high school, they come, they fall underneath that.
That's what I was thinking. Okay, thank you. That's the only question I had. Anybody else have a question? Are there other things that you need to go over?
I think we're running, honestly, I think we're running very well. We got a great team there. We get a lot of good support, and I think you've seen some changes over the last year and two. And just appreciate the opportunity that how we're collaborating with the district and also our community to get people out and work in our workforce. So thank you for the support.
Well, and thank you for being here and doing what you do.
Thank you, ma'am.
So before we go on to the next item, which will be a budget briefing, since we've been here for almost two hours, we'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back for the budget briefing. Okay, we are back in session, and we're going to have a budget briefing. Dr. Amy Decimore is Chief, why does it say Chief Academic Officer on my copy? Did you change jobs?
No, ma'am. Not anytime recently.
And Ms. Kelly Letcher, Director of Budget.
Hello, everyone. How are you doing today?
And they are from Financial Services.
Yes. So I just was going to start us off with, we did receive from the legislatures, the first calculation, or the proposed first calculation, I should say. I think it was in its cooling-off period, and I think they still have to do the final vote, and then it has to go before the governor. But based on what we have right now, I wanted to bring it to you all so you would know what we were looking at and what we're planning on at this time. The state, if you remember, at one time, I had come to you with our enrollment projections for next year, and then the state came back and asked us to increase it more. So we did. And so the projection for students next year, this budget's based on 96,432 students, which is a 2,632,000-student increase from where we are now. I'm not sure that we're going to get there. So in preparation of that, I just want you to know that we are going to be holding some money in the back so that if we don't get there, we're not having to go back out to schools and make some reductions mid-year, that we will be prepared for that. We really think that probably 1,200ths more in line, maybe a little bit more. But just in preparation, we want you to know that. And if the kids do come, we'll be pulling it out of the back and putting it into our schools to help fund the kids when they show up. So based on that number, we're looking about at a $9 million increase over the current year's budget and next year, which, while that's not like super terrific, that is better than I expected. So that's a good thing. But I want to remind you that of that $9 million, we already negotiated with our Talc and Spok bargaining units to increase our health insurance cost for next year. So we're looking about $7.4 million of that already going into health insurance cost. And I had told you before that the state was still looking at increasing the Florida retirement rate that we were looking at, and they did do that. There's good and bad. I was expecting it to be higher than what it came in at, that it's going from 10% to 10.82. I really expected it to jump up around 11, but that is about a $4.2 million increase to our budget.
Can you repeat that number, please?
Yes, it's a $4.2 million increase is what we're expecting at this point for the retirement system itself. So if you're looking at 4.2 estimated and 7.4, you're looking at about $11.6 million increases that we know are going into FY '22, and the state is giving us $9 million. Remember, some of that will be held back because we're not sure we're really going to get all the students that are generating it. So we're starting next year in a spot where we know we're going to spend more than we're getting. We will have ESSER funds, ESSER II funds, to help us through with some of this. And now, we're going to start meeting with academic services to look at what is the best way to use that money to give the best impact on our student learnings, our student learning gains. So that's where our focus is going to be with those dollars. One of the big, if you're looking at, and I'll bring this down so you can see on this, you can see is one of the big reductions took place in our class size reduction. From my understanding, what they're saying is that, apparently, they said they've been doing the calculation wrong for years, and they're correcting it this year. So that's a $10 million reduction in what their original, what their proposal from the current year is. So that's where we took a big hit. Had class size remained the same, it would have been a nice budget, but it did go down there, so that did make a difference. The BSA did increase $53.42, which is a 1.2% increase, which, you know, it's fluctuated around for years. They've had it go down and up, and so that's a pretty good increase for the BSA. I want to point out to the district cost differential, if you remember, last year, they were talking about changing the way that they do the district cost differential, which was really going to hurt Lee County. Again, they've decided to keep it status quo, and they're having people look at the best way to do the district cost differential. best way to do the district cost differentials. And that's basically what they look at to, for like the cost of living in different areas, to make sure they account for that in the calculation. Now, if you look at the dollars per FTE at the bottom of the page, we are, our dollars per FTE is $8,011.96, which, when you compare that to last year, is a decrease of 1.57%. And again, that's mainly when you look at that class size reduction dollars, it really did drop it down. I want to make sure I hit all of the points. Oh, I wanted to talk about two, about, again, there's no lottery dollars built into the budget. Remember, lottery came to us in two pieces for school recognition. There's no grades again this year, so there is no school recognition. And then they usually gave us money for us to give to our schools for the school improvement plans, and that again is not in the budget for next year. Some good news for Lee County, however, is that they did fund PICO for the charters at the higher level, which makes it, so that we do not have to share our capital outlay millage dollars with them. Which is a win for us in Lee County because of the amount of our capital outlay dollars and the number of charters that we have. So. I also just want to touch on the fact that we will be meeting again with you all in June for the preliminary budget. At the end of June, at that point, we'll be bringing to you all of the pieces of the budget that, and how they come together. And then we'll have our tentative budget in July and the final in September. We're hoping to come to you in between at some of your briefings to talk about other pieces of the budget. You know, there's many pieces that add up. We're working on the capital. Amy's gonna talk about sales tax now, but we're working with operations and academic services to settle on the capital plan right now as well. So are there any questions about the budget?
Okay. We'll start with Mrs. Gittens and then go on to Ms. Patrica.
Thank you very much. The question I have is about the class size reduction change. Is there a possibility you can send us just how it previously was and how it's done now for comparative?
Sure, I can send you what they have in the...
Just simplistically, they used to add this and now they add this and subtract that.
Sure, I'll take a look at that and send it to you so you can see the differences.
Thank you very much. And it is raining outside, babe.
Excited, your only question. Mrs. Patrica? Is the Guardian program funded this year?
I think what they did, I'm trying to remember from the legislation what I seen on the Guardian program, but I believe there was a small piece of that funded, but I don't think it was for the whole piece, but I can look into it and let you know for sure.
If you wouldn't mind letting us know whether there's sufficient funds in there for us to create that program, because I believe what was in the budget last year was just like the $50 bonus. And we were left without the ability to actually pay for it. We would have had to have substituted SROs for Guardians. Second question, am I correct in seeing that they did not roll back the RLE this year?
We will not know that for sure until July. On July 19th is when they do the certification for the millage rates, and that's when I'll know for sure what the millage rates are. Right now, I just have estimates based on what they have. July 19th is when they'll actually certify and I'll know what the state's doing.
Okay, and finally, if I, this is kind of unrelated, but really important, because I don't think we're having the superintendent's evaluation out loud. I have to thank you guys, Dr. Decimore's and your team, for your amazing ability to manage our finances during the year of a pandemic and do it in, do it while dealing with ever-changing regulations. You know, you would get money from the CARES Act and they would say, okay, you can use it this way, and then they would change and say, no, you have to use it this way. And you were forever on top of it and you made sure that our kids and our staff had what they needed. So you guys were, as far as I'm concerned, magicians this year, and I really, really appreciate what you've done. So thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Okay, other board member questions? Okay. Seeing none, don't go away ladies.
No, we're switching.
Oh, I see. Okay, well, you're still Chief Academic Officer on this, but for everybody, she's the Chief Financial Officer. And Dr. Decimore's and Ms. Letcher will continue now with our sales tax briefing.
All right, and thank you so much, Dr. Atkins and members of the board. Ms. Patrica, thank you for those kind words, do appreciate it. I do want to stress that it truly was a group effort. There was a lot of information I was asked for in very short periods of time, that many people from all, across all divisions came together in order to make those things happen. And so I'm grateful and appreciative to all of them as well, just as you are. And some of that fun and madness will continue into next year as well. So we'll go through this information and then wrap with kind of an overview of what we're, you know, what we're expecting to have to do for next year, at least as far as what we know right now. So. Oh, no, I got it. So just wanted to also share with you some of the latest information that we've shared with the Independent Sales Tax Oversight Committee, or the ISOC. We are now, or in January, we hit the two-year mark in which we had been receiving sales tax funds. Ms. Gittens, as our board liaison to that committee, has joined us just for, I think, in person, the last board meeting. Thank you, put me in wide mode. Thank you. Joined us, I think we've had one in-person meeting since all of the, you know, the pandemic stuff started, so that was the last meeting in March of 2021. You all have all of this information in your packets, but I wanted to point out some special things so that you, we could collectively talk about it as a group, as a board, and know, be on the same page as to what we've done so far, what the plans are moving forward, and then how that fits into the capital plan as you will see it, or as we will bring it forward within the next couple of meetings for you. So I won't go through each of these because they're very large, but we included all of this so that you all have a sense of the types of information that we share with ISOC each time we get together with them, if you haven't had a chance to view all of the meetings. So the information, we believe, is comprehensive. We've worked with the committee since its inception, and Ms. Patrica was the first board liaison to the committee and knows how we kind of worked and tweaked and moved and was flexible in order to kind of get the information together that we felt like they were looking for, and we think, at least at this point, that we're in a good spot. So looking at this information, part of what I wanted to impress on you is that when you see in the current year, FY '21, the capital budget of 453.8 million, you've got 144 million of that, or that is 32%, that is from sales tax revenue. So at this point in time, two years in, there's a third of the budget that would not be there had it not been, you know, for the efforts, the successful efforts of getting this sales tax in place, through the efforts of the board, and then, of course, the tremendous support of the community. So that's pretty phenomenal. I think when you look at it in that way of something that, you know, two years ago, we didn't even have. So the large impact of what that, you know, what that will do over a period of time. And then at this point, and again, all this information is as of March. So these numbers change on a daily basis, but this is as of March. You see how the total amount of money was spread or budgeted throughout all of the different categories that we had proposed using the sales tax for. So a pretty even spread between the four categories, and then you see there's a reserve category as well, because all dollars won't be spent in one year, those things carry on over to the next year. So we think a pretty good depiction to get, for people to get a fast picture of, how is it that you're budgeting and spending the money? So then on down, and I'm gonna fly through some of these, because again, I don't want to, I want to hit the highlights for you, but I wanted you to have a sense of what is shared with the Sales Tax Committee when we get together with them. But we give them an overview of the major projects that are going on at any point in time, and we define that as any projects that are greater than a million dollars. And then, of course, any major school, new schools or major renovations that are going on, we're gonna give them the update of all those as well. We try to make sure that we include lots of pictures in there so they can really get visuals of how the projects are moving along and what they look like at beginning to end, as well as the timeline for those projects, their total project cost, and then, you know, verbally how we're doing with those projects. Are we following along and within the timeline and the budget that we had initially established for those projects? So these are the types of information that they'll get each and every time. But then, we also gave this past time some cumulative sales tax data based on what we had received and had expended over the two years since sales tax had been in force. So this here, this graph here will show you the cumulative sales tax expense by school level and by zone in the different categories. So you see that here? And then we also have the depiction by the age of the school. And as you see here, this data is as of February, so this is as of February 2nd. So we also have that cumulative data as of the age of the school. And then this one was for all categories, maintenance, safety, and technology. And then this one by age of school is basically just hitting maintenance only. So we're reviewing all of this data because it is a very piece, important pieces of data in that we want to make sure that when we're defining the projects that we will utilize sales tax for, are we spreading them across all of our zones effectively? Are we spreading them across ages of schools and by level effectively? Are we appropriately dressing the priorities that we set out at the beginning when we talk about how we will spend sales tax? So when you look at these categories here, keep in mind that the new schools are not included within this. This is just the three categories, not four. The new schools, because they're just basically on debt service, we didn't put that in this depiction here, so that is one category that you're not seeing here. But we did want the Sales Tax Committee to know, and then appropriately the community to know, and the board to know, that this is the type of data that we are making sure to examine and review so that when we're identifying the priorities or how we will spend sales tax in any given year, we've looked at all of this information holistically in order to come up with the priorities, as well as taking into account what you as a board identified as your values, which you wanted to see in terms of how projects would be looked at and prioritized. So that is that information. And then we also, as I said, like to share lots of pictures with them so they can kind of see before and afters of different things. We usually have all of our people here from the different areas, so maintenance folks would be here, technology people, all of our construction people, so that they could talk them through some of these different projects and the impact of them and the scope of them as we show them the pictures, so that they can really see the differences of the befores and the afters. So this is the type of information they will receive. And then they also receive more detailed financial information, as you see here. So this is a depiction of all of the sales tax revenue by fiscal year and the month that we've earned them. So in fiscal year 19, and that was the beginning, that was a shorter year because that was just at its inception, so from January 2019 to June 2019. Then this was the entire fiscal year 20, and then you see here, each month starts fiscal year 21. So they're able to see, and you're able to see as well, detailed information about how and when we're collecting sales tax revenue. This is a year-over-year comparison, so as we continue to get more information, we can gather this so that we can better see what the trend data has been in the past, and it helps to inform and better predict, you know, the projections that we're making in the future about what sales tax revenue could potentially look like. So that's why we keep this. So the lightest blue line is fiscal year 21. So as you can see, interestingly enough, that fiscal year 21 line is riding over that orange line for fiscal year 20. So we have out-collected fiscal year 20, basically in every month this year. So outperforming our revised projection for fiscal year 21 so far. And then this will show you too, the projections versus the actual collections. So our inception to date, you'll see over here, we projected at the very beginning 199.5, almost 200 million. We're at 163 million right now, knowing that this was as of 315, we've got a whole another, you know, quarter to go. When you look at our current year-to-date, that projection of 76 million versus the collection of 47.4 million, we had earned at the time that this was gathered, 62% of the total revenue that we have projected only halfway through the fiscal year. So we were outperforming what our projections were at this point in time. And then it shows you just the breakdown of quarter two as well. So this is the type of information that we'll share with the committee as they come, both the financial data and the project-related data. And then, for those who like more hardcore numbers, less pictures, because we do have both ends of the spectrum on the Sales Tax Committee, we also have the table here that just shows the actual number, when, what month that that collection was for, when we actually received that collection, because it comes a couple months behind, right, as you can see. So if sales tax month was in June, we didn't actually receive that money until August, and how much all of that was compared to the projection for that particular month. So we have it laid out for them like that as well. So this is just the type of information that the committee will receive each time, and then we'll have a discussion about that. They'll ask any questions they want to ask, and then part of the flow of each meeting is that they will take a vote on and agree that, based on all the information we gave them, number one, everything that we've expended the sales tax on to date, and they will receive a financial statement, both an annual and like a quarterly financial statement, that everything we spent the money on does in fact agree to, or does fall in line with or adhere to what we said we were going to do within the referendum when we passed it, and then also agree that future projects that we discuss with them as well also follow those same guidelines. So we wanted to share this information with you because at the two-year mark, this has some really good cumulative data in it, that I wanted to make sure that the board was aware that this was here, it existed, and I'm sure that there'll be times where you're gonna want to refer to it and be communicating this information out to your constituents as well, because we've received really good feedback from the ISOC related to the information that they've received and the difference that the sales tax has made thus far. Which brings me to the next part of this, and you'll see in the information, you'll see a change-for-change asset sales tax report in here as well. And this is one of the, this is information from the sales tax related to its inception since January 2019 through June of 2020, so it was really the end of fiscal year 20. And we wanted to create something that summarized some huge things related to impact of sales tax and be able to communicate that out in nice bites to the community. So Communications helped us, thank you so much for their expertise, putting this information together. That was a message, first of all, from the Independent Sales Service Tax Oversight Committee, attesting to the use of the sales tax funds and thanking the committee for their support. And then basically a summary, an annual report, or a report, I keep trying not to use that word annual, because I'm not sure that will necessarily do it every year, but it's a sales tax report that gives it by the numbers, you know, what have we collected so far, how have we spent that? Some spotlights on major projects that have happened, had happened within that year-and-a-half time period that utilized the sales tax and the difference that that made. And then also, there was a graph in here that listed each of our schools, and then there was a little X in the box if that particular school, I will blow this up a little bit so you can see that on the screen. And then there was a little X in the box related to, in any, in either of the four categories, was there some type of work funded through sales tax that was done at that particular location? And as you can see, when you flip through, you know, the boxes in all of the schools, we really did, we really were able to make some good progress at many of our locations within that... within that period of time. And again, this was January 19 through June of 2020. Of course, the story continues. So we wanted to be able to put that out there to adequately communicate to the community the types of work that was going on and what impact it was making. We do have the dashboard, right, on the website, where people could go in and look up any school and then figure out, okay, so what's budgeted at the school this year? But what we do know by the information that we're receiving from the hits on the website is that there's just, there's not a lot of them, right? So that we can't rely on the website by itself to be able to communicate this information. There's things that we have to actively do to get that information out, which is one of the things that Communications is helping us on. And at our last ISOC meeting, we talked about the media education campaign that we wanted to engage on, that would continue to engage the media, engage social media, engage the community in being able to push a message out and make sure that our community is educated on all of this data, all of this information, how it's impacting our schools, therefore, how it's impacting the community, including how it's impacting jobs in our community and economic prosperity in our community. So, we're working with Communications in order to come up with the whole education campaign, and several of our ISOC committee members also weighed in on certain things that they thought should definitely be included within that education campaign. Communications laid out a plan and a timeline, and we continue to work that plan and timeline. And then, last, what you see here is an example of what a financial report to the ISOC would look at, would look like. So this particular thing is an annual one, and it's based on, you know, for all year, what has happened. So there's two, since its inception, 2019, fiscal year 20, and then what has happened so far in '21. And then, it also has cumulative totals on the end of that. This particular information is as of March 15, so they can go in and see within any of the categories that we, you know, budget our sales tax dollars within, what has happened in that category in any given year, and what's left reserved to move on into remaining years. So, we wanted to make sure that we had shared this sales tax information with you. At the two-year mark, it's important, especially embarking on that education campaign with the public. And then, it will play an integral part, as we just saw, 33% of the whole capital budget, we wanted to make sure that everybody had a good overview of what the historical has been so far, so that when we're going to building the capital plan, which we are in the midst of doing now, and bring you all that capital plan and maybe a couple of different versions of that capital plan with some, you know, decisions to be made in certain areas, we are on the same page and share the same information in terms of the background of some of these things, so that we can make sure that together, we collectively feel like we're on the right course with how we're building our capital plan, what we're prioritizing in that. And at the end of this 10-year period, we're comfortable with where we believe we'll end up based on everything that we know now, knowing that everything we know now could completely change tomorrow, but we only can work with the information that we have. So, just making sure that, you know, together, we're building what we all believe collectively is the best capital plan that we can, that accomplishes the goals that together we've set out for. So I'll pause for some questions before we wrap up. Are there, are there any?
Okay, board members, questions? Yes, Ms. Jordan?
I just have two questions. On page 17, when it says island school, what is, is that Sanibel or is that Pine Island? What school is that?
On page...
And I think it said three, so I was trying to figure out what island has three schools.
On page 17, so I'm going back.
Oh, is this part of...
It's just right here?
It was showing like the schools, the west, it said west zone, then it has island schools, and then there's three, and then even over on the left...
Oh, right here. You're talking right here.
Yeah, and on the left-hand side too, it, it says, I'm always, I always see east, south, and west, but I've never seen the island, so I was like, where is...
So Barrier Island is what we're referring to? So you got Pine Island, you got Sanibel, and you got the beach.
Okay, so it's all, that's where the three are at?
Yes.
So I was like, none of them have three schools?
Right.
Okay, so it's all like them?
Right, because technically, they're not in any one of those zones.
Okay, great, thank you for that. And then, it was just going around in my head. And then, on the, on that page 46 and 47 where you have like the markings, there's, I think there was three schools that had not one checkmark. Is that because they're newer, or is this school improvement projects?
Yes, so you're talking here.
Yes, so you have some who have, they're straight across the board, and then there's a few, I think it was three actually, that had not one, not for safety, maintenance, technology, nothing.
Yeah.
Well, Pine Island's on there, and it's not, they don't have, they don't have a checkmark. That's not a new school.
Yeah, Pelican, Pine Island...
Like, yes, so I see a couple here, like Pine Island, Pine Woods, those are a few that I see here that don't have any. And so, Skyline, I see that here, didn't have one.
And Tice, so there's four?
Yeah, okay, down here. So it, so that doesn't necessarily mean that there was no work done in any of these categories there, it just so means that it happens to not have been funded through sales tax. But the reason why this information is important is so that we can go back and examine each of those locations and say, okay, is there something of priority here that needs to be done that we may not be addressing? Or is it just that it happens to be at these particular locations, they haven't been prioritized because of maybe recent work that had already been done? As somebody mentioned, Tortuga is a pretty recent school, so that could be some reason for that, but we have... Did you, did you want to add to that, Trey?
Sure, if you don't mind.
Yeah, please.
So if you, if you look at that, there's definitely some lagging data there. If you look at the other dates, as Dr. Desmond Moore had mentioned, through January 2020, if you remember a prior briefing that we had where we accelerated because of the excess labor that occurred a couple of months later, we have been in, and sometimes multiple times in those schools, some of which that you have noted, where we have installed the Promethean boards and on access control projects, we've done mobile broadcast cart refreshes and so forth. So, just, I would just say, keep in mind, and that's just certainly relative to technology, other areas too, but that was from January 2020, prior to our acceleration.
Thank you. It just caught my eye when I glanced through that.
Yes.
I didn't, I did not see that 2020, so I apologize for that.
Yes, it was, it was only through, this is through June 2020, so that was at that point. But then, also, it should catch your eye, because that's one of the reasons that we keep the information, is for it to catch our eye too. Are we doing this right? Are we covering all the bases the way that we need to cover them? Or is there something else that we need to look at? So that's part of the process of when we come up with the next capital plan, this data helps to inform the decisions that we make.
Perfect, thank you.
So, it's, so it's a, it was, it is a very valid and a very good question, and ones that we ask as we go through and determine what's next.
It was very, it's really good, thank you.
Okay, other questions? Ms. Skittens?
Okay, thank you all for the report, and it is very educational and interesting being at the ISOC meetings, because they do ask some very deep questions and get down to actually, you know, what is this, and what-ifs, and all that, so it's very good. So, as the liaison, I try not to ask many of my questions, so I have a couple for you right now.
Okay.
One is on slide 11. Let me get to it really quickly, and...
On MM Middle School, am I on the right one?
Right, on MM Middle School. And my question on that is, we had discussed at one point that the extension in the front of the building for the additional classrooms could be done through sales tax. And I am gathering that is what is called Phase Two? Is that correct?
Um, no, no, not exactly. So, for each construction project, there's a Phase One and a Phase Two. Phase One is just the design, the architect, that type of thing, and then Phase Two is the actual construction. Together, Phase One and Phase Two make up the entire project as it had originally been planned. The expansion that you're referring to is a completely separate project that has not to do with this first construction part.
It's not on here.
Yeah.
So my question is, we had discussed the fact that DOE originally did not approve that additional, those additional classrooms. And in the discussion, it was that, I believe you'd said, well, that's something we can do through the sales tax. So my, my question is, is that what is being done? Because I understand when they're building the elementary school next door, that they're going to add those classrooms, and is that going to be through the sales tax?
Yes, yes it is. You don't see that, that's not on here, because like I said, that, this project cost that we're referring to here doesn't reflect that separate project, it only reflects the first project that the board approved, which was the original building. The expansion of such, you will see on the next capital plan that comes through for the next five-to-10-year plan, so that will be on there.
And on the, I think it's the next slide, is the elementary?
Yes.
School that's going in? And do we have the breakdown of how much of that is sales tax, or no? Because we're not into it yet.
Uh, yeah, we haven't completely built the plan out yet, or the funding sources for the plan yet, so not just quite yet, although I am anticipating that the entire cost will be sales tax. But I don't know that yet for sure, because we have to break down the funding sources, and we also have the ability to use impact fee for that, because that's adding new student station. So the whole name of the game as far as assigning funding sources to projects is to use your most restrictive funding first, right? So impact fees would be most restrictive, so we want to make sure that we were spending those out first. So I can't yet say, until we finish building out the whole plan and assigning funding sources, what now is assigned to what.
Okay, and you answered two questions, because I was going to ask, what is that process? And you, you said you use most restrictive and then work your way down.
Uh, right.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. As well as, of course, keeping in mind what the purpose of the funding source is, right? So adhering to all rules and regulations related to that.
If it's restrictive, that you can only do this with, that you start with that?
Right.
Okay. The last thing is, the, I guess it goes back to that last page with all the little asterisks and stuff, but when you talk about technology, and this may be, I'm trying to come back up, but what percentage of that technology piece is sales tax as opposed to, like with the Promethean boards, we had, you know, several sources, including, I think it was CARES Act funds and different things, I'm not sure of all the process. So how much of it is sales tax? And how much is...
There, there are two main sources, and Chair, you're welcome to add anything that you want to, to this statement, but there really are two main sources of funding that we use for technology across the board. It's either typically going to be, if it, if it isn't capital, because there are some technology costs that are completely operating, right? But if we're talking, it isn't capital, it's either sales tax, or it's the 1.5 mil of the property tax funding. So, between those two, sales tax and property tax funding makes up the bulk of everything that we're spending as far as capital expenditures and technology. So, I'm not, as far as the total amount, I'm not sure as far as the breakdown of that, but mostly with what you're talking about in schools, with the Promethean boards, mostly all of that is packaged inside of the sales tax funding.
Okay.
Trey, did you want to add to that?
No, I think that's, that's right, yeah, just on the sales tax. So you've got our, our computer refresh Atlas project, which would include like mobile carts, broadcast carts, as well as like the Promethean boards, of course, of which we're deploying 6,600 panels across the district. So those, those are, and access control, of course, those are the primary areas in technology that are covered by the sales tax.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think that's it, the others I can get with you personally.
Sure, absolutely.
Mrs. Patrica?
Just whenever we talk about the half penny sales tax, it makes me really, really happy, because I really believe this is legacy work that you're doing in terms of spending it appropriately and in accordance with the, the promises we made to taxpayers. It's legacy work for Dr. Atkins and his team, in terms of the amount of work you put into going out to the public and gaining their trust. It's legacy work for three members of the board who were seated at the time and put in that work to go out. It was a political disaster, at least for me personally, but it was a huge win for kids. And I just, every single time we talk about it, it makes me happy and it makes me feel excited, and I just wanted to share that with you. So thank you very much.
Oh, well, thank you, thank you. And that was one of the reasons why we wanted to bring it forward and make sure that we had a special conversation about it, because, you know, it is, it is a big deal, it's generational, and, you know, we, we, we didn't feel like we were talking about it enough, so we needed to talk about it some and really spread the word in terms of the impact, the great impact that it is having across all of our locations, and some of the great things that are able to happen because it's here. So, yes, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Morgan?
So, a couple of things. First of all, I think you've done a great job with the numbers. It just, how you lay it out, how you portray it graphically is fabulous. Looking at the sales tax dashboard, that's really the only place where we aggregate information about the sales tax. I think it would be helpful to have a link to the meetings as well as the presentations. So, just because I think the more information we put in one place, the more members of the community, different communities, we provide information to. I love the Communications plan, especially talking about the economic impact, because that tells me that you in Communications, and I especially want to give kudos to Communications, you're now targeting Communications to specific audiences. We have a parent audience about what's happening in the schools, we have a business community about what the impact is in terms of what we're doing in the schools. And I think the more we try to communicate directly to certain parts of the community, the more people we will reach. If you don't have to look through generic material to find what you're looking for, but you can find exactly what you need given your segment of the demographic, I think that's great. Oh, and I also, I was going to ask, does the committee issue a report? I know they take a vote. You mentioned that they ask themselves three questions at the end of every meeting. I think everything we're talking about communicating is coming from the district, so we're talking about ourselves and our accomplishments, but nobody's putting a stamp on it from the outside. I think it would be helpful if ISOC essentially issued a statement at the end of each meeting, you know, that this is what we've agreed to, and then we put it up right on the front page, ISOC's meeting in March 2021, this is their finding, boom. Because I, I think, and we need to list the members of the committee, because I think the community needs to see who else is engaged in this process, not just staff, but that we have a panoply of people in the community doing it. So those would be my suggestions. I think you guys are doing awesome work, and I, and I think that from a Communications point of view, the district is getting closer to, not only in the area of finance, but hopefully at some point in the area of academics, et cetera, that we are more targeted in terms of the audiences that we are attempting to communicate with.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, okay, thank you for that. We, so we've not necessarily done that to date, that's kind of what that sales tax report was meant to, we put that letter on the front from the ISOC, or the message on the front from the ISOC, so it was kind of their stamp of approval on the information that was in there.
Go to the report.
Yes, yes.
We need to see that.
Yes.
In my opinion, we need to see that on the front page of the website.
On website, okay, I got you, I got you. And then, one of the things that, at least a couple of members have, of, of the ISOC have talked about is, as we go out... talked about is, as we go out, and they do believe that we should be going out to different places in the community to discuss and share this information, that they wanted to join members of the district in terms of doing that, in terms of disseminating that information as well. So just wanted to mention that. So I have that, yep.
Great. Thank you. Great work.
Other board member questions?
I just wanted to address Ms. Morgan. So I remember early on on ISOC, asking them to put out a statement, and they were very hesitant to do so. So I think anything beyond what, I agree with you, on the front page or whatever, but anything beyond this on a quarterly basis, expecting an annual statement, I think is probably about as far as we'll get. I, I just wanted to sort of let you know that that, you know, I made that request and I was met with chirps, and it just sort of wasn't going anywhere.
Okay. Other board member questions or comments?
I just wanted to say thank you once again for this very comprehensive report. And I have an off-sided question. Has there been much of an impact due to recent construction and growth on our impact fees? You know, have we seen a big increase in that, or not as yet?
Not, not, not a bunch. Not, not a big increase. Remember, we're still at a lesser, a lesser percentage of collection. Fifty-two and a half percent, I believe, is where we are now in terms of the collection rate of impact fees. So there has not been a large increase to that as of yet.
Okay. And, and I read that they are going to increase the impact fees for people, or that they're planning on voting on it. So I, I didn't know if you had heard anything about that.
Um, I, so I hadn't. I do know that the, you know, the last committee meeting with the Board of County Commissioners was that once it got to a certain level of collection, that that's where it would stay, until they chose to take another action. And they've not communicated with us as to this point, as to their intention to take any other action. So when you say that, are you referring to the collection rate, or are you referring to the fee itself?
I'm referring to the fee itself.
Okay, okay. Which might be, which might have been a different fee, because with our, you know, impact fee report, there's a, you know, there's a consultant that comes on every, I believe it's five years, and does, you know, a, a data collection in order to determine what a new recommended calculated fee would be.
Right.
And it's not yet our time for that. So it could be, I'm not sure, and of course, there's many different impact fees that the county is collecting. So it might have been in reference to something else, but we are not in the middle of a school impact fee collection data report with them at this point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, board members?
But we can, we can sure check into it, though, if we find out something different. I certainly will let you know, but we have not communicated with them on that recently.
Okay, yeah. It was in the financial in Sunday's news press, so.
Okay, yes, okay. All right, we'll, we'll look into that.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else from the dais? Thank you so much, ladies. It was a great, both of those were great presentations, very beautiful job with the slides, and I'm sure the committee appreciates the pictures as, as do we here. So thank you.
Awesome. All right, thank you so much, and we'll, we'll see you next time.
Okay. All right. At this time, we are done with the presentations, and we are on public comment. It does not appear.
I think there's some in the back room.
Is there somebody in the back room?
It appears that there's two.
Okay. So have you gotten cards?
I have, I have the two individuals' names, so I can call them.
Okay. So if somebody would get the individuals in the back room, please?
Denise Nystron and Christine Divageli. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter from this meeting's agenda, only this meeting's agenda. If you completed a blue card, please put it in the basket provided. If you need a blue card, it will be provided to you, and it's located outside. Rules concerning public comment are posted in the back, and you will use the back central microphone. Please be advised that the board does not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. At the end of the public comment period, excuse me, the board vice chair, excuse me, sorry, Ms. Vaughn will address concerns or the assignment of any concerns or requests to the superintendent. Board policy 1.181 requires the wearing of masks. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on today's agenda. Personal intacts, such as embarrassing or harassing comments on individuals or abusive language are prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, and booing are prohibited. Any display of temper are prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow the proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per board policy 1.11. The time per speaker is three minutes. You will find a countdown on the big screen in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. We encourage you to address the board as a whole versus individual board members as they act as a collective body. Please state your name prior to making your comment. And Madam Vice, Madam Chair, there are two individuals for public comment. Denise Nystron, one, one individual now, okay?
Oh, just one?
Yes.
All right. Please begin.
Christine Divageli, just me today. So I just have a couple of questions real quick. Can you guys please remind me what happens to a complaint that's filed that doesn't make the cut to be sent to a higher authority or gets sent back to the district? Like, when it gets sent back to the district, does it just come back to you guys, and just, does it die here? Or what is, or where is the due process in that? My next question is, if someone on the board has a complaint filed against them, and it is of a criminal nature, should they still be sitting on the board and acting and voting on important issues? Like, I can appreciate the level of concern for members of the board. I too am very concerned. I'm concerned that compromised board members are still voting and making important decisions for our community, even though they are currently being investigated for criminal allegations that are made against them. Now, I'd like to know if the board is willing to agree to update the public at every action meeting as to the status of this ongoing investigation. Perhaps we should have a webpage for this investigation, just like there's one for the interim superintendent search, so that parents can be involved in the process for, you know, for the sake of transparency. In regards to the adult code of conduct, it was asked, what, someone asked what code of conduct students are going to, will fall under while in attendance at a technical school? And the adult code of conduct claims to fall back on the student COC. So does that mean that if a student with a 504 receiving special bathroom accommodations will be provided those same accommodations at the technical school? Because I did not see any mention about any of that in the adult COC. In regards to the sales tax budget, on the schools, school improvements projects page, it mentions 67 schools that are in need of safety improvements, or have already had them performed on them. And then it says on slide 34, it mentions to, to further ensure the safety of our students, specific details on these projects are not shared with the public. But my question is, what about parents? Like, I don't need to know, nor do I want to know, every single detail of every single change. However, I would like to know if you're, if you've replaced all the cameras at X school, or you've replaced all the locks at Y school? And I would like to see a more detailed list of what safety measures are being taken in our schools. Perhaps that information can be a little, I, I did hear the one committee member come up here and explain that they were trying to educate the community, community better in that, in that regard, and I do appreciate that. But I was hoping that maybe the information could be a little bit easier to access and assimilate for us. That's all I have for today. Thank you, guys, and I'll see you again in a couple of hours.
Thank, thank you. Some of these I can, I can comment on complaints. It would not be appropriate to have a special page on, on the website. Ongoing investigations into complaints, no matter who, who it is, who the complaint has been against, are, are confidential. Once the, the investigation has concluded, then it becomes more of an open matter. Some of the things, Ms. Divageli, is, did I, I don't think I said that right, but anyway, Ms. Denise, Ms. Chris, boy, I'm getting the names messed up, Ms. Christine, some, some of the things that you have asked for are readily available, and keep in mind that we do have public records requests. So if there's some things that, you know, we, there's so many moving parts to a school district, we can't possibly have everything on our website. But I think we, we do have a very comprehensive website. If there's something that you're interested in learning about, you can always email the board, board members, board office. We will find who can address these for you. Same thing with the safety measures. We can, we can get you answers that are not readily found on the website. So hopefully that helps some, somewhat with that. Okay, so we have had one public speaker, and now let's talk right here on, on the dais. And let's start in the middle today with Ms. Jordan. Board member comment?
Okay, board member comments. Let's see. Okay, I have, I wasn't prepared yet. So we had Franklin Park had their meeting, and I spoke about this sometime this week. It was great that community came out. Ms. Eball and her staff did an excellent job in sharing information regarding the, the rebuild. We had a lot of the alumnis that, from there, which was quite interesting, because they shared the history of Franklin Park and the community in itself. So I thought that was beneficial as well, hearing what they had to say and how they feel that we helped to move forward with that. Let me see, what else? We had, I was able to come to the parent university graduation, which was done by communication. Communications, they do an awesome job. The parents were excited to be here, the children were more excited that the parents were here, and that they were part of seeing their parents be celebrated, which I thought was awesome as well. And they had, it was just set up so nice, it actually was a graduation. And exciting graduations, we're looking forward to our graduations that are coming up within a couple of weeks. We're moving right along with that, and I'm really excited for these, for the kids for, that we're going to be able to do that this year. So that is a great thing. We have a lot of things going on. We have the all-county dance is taking place at North Fort Myers High, and that's coming up on the 20th. We have so many different things, and I know Ms. Vaughn had mentioned the website. I would definitely say that people should go to our website and look and see what is taking place in our district, and what amazing things that our students are still being able to do. It may be a little bit different how they're, how they're doing it, but they're doing it. And I think that we really need to be thankful for that. We have, what else? Like Buckingham Exceptional Student Center, they're going to be doing a Alice in Wonderland there. So I'm really excited for them, because it's just so much fun when you go over there and you see the joy in their, in their eyes, and just, if you want to just really feel good, that's the place to go, because they can make you feel good, the kids there. And then we also have coming up the ribbon cutting of Gateway High. There's just so much going on, and I, I thank you for allowing me to speak first, and I'm just looking forward to all the good things that are coming our way. Thank you.
Okay. Come this way, Ms. Gittens.
You're catching all of us off guard.
I'm just, you gotta be ready.
Okay. A couple of things that I wanted to bring up, but I'm going to hold off on some of it at this point because of the hour. I, I just want to admonish my colleagues that we have to be very careful and listen to each other more. And I think because of some of the situations that are happening in the community and with the district right now, a lot more people are watching our meetings than before. And I, I know I've heard other board members say they get a lot of, you know, calls and messages and texts, and so do I. And we just need to listen more to each other. There have been several situations that have been misconstrued, because people don't listen to each other. They just listen to answer what they feel they'll say afterwards. So I'm just saying we need, should be real careful about that. Attorney Bruno has put out a couple of things about Robert's rules and all of that. And I have spoken to some other districts, a couple of retired superintendents and current superintendents, and other board members in other districts. And I, I think we need to kind of look at some of the ways that we do, for example, the consensus. And Attorney Bruno said this afternoon that a true consensus, and when you research it, a true consensus means that everyone should be agreeing with it. And if someone is not, that's when you ask the question, how can we get you to the point of agreement? And I think as we look back, and I've gone back to some of the meetings, we've, we've done it differently. It's not, you take a consensus, and it's a vote, and we go on. And I really think we need to look into that a little bit more. Also have a question about the audit committee. We've been limping along with that for quite a while, and don't know when that is coming through. And I am just bringing up, you can get back to me on it, but I believe we should have moved forward with something at this point. And anyway, I'll reserve the other comments. What was the other thing I wanted to mention? Okay. The, you, you all have the webpage that we did, and I will bring it tonight for good of the order, for a vote to go ahead with that. You have the, the URL that was sent to you, and the corrections were made according to requests by the board members. And Laura Howard has said that, I'll share this with you, excuse me, the forum can go to all emails. The question had been about the subject line, that's been fixed. You won't see it as you're looking at it, because it's not on the webpage. You would have to send an email to see and receive one to show that it has a subject line on it. It will, it can go to all emails of all of us with the subject line on. It can go to one email or an Excel document that we, she says, I can email the Excel document agreed upon. So the Excel document would make it very simple for everyone to see how many communications we've received, and what the comments are, and that type of thing. And my preference would be receiving something like that, because then you're not going through individual emails. You're just looking at whole spreadsheet, and it would be time-saving, in my opinion, but it's up to the rest of you. And we can do that later. Are there any comments or questions on that at this point? Yes, may I?
No, that's Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just wondering, Mr. PreBruno, should, should we wait for this evening when this comes up at our action meeting?
I think you can talk about it now, and you can also talk about the action meeting, so it's really up to the pleasure of the board.
Okay, well, since.
I mean, because this is good of the, you know, your comments, so.
Since, since you brought it up, then I think Ms. Morgan has a question.
I'm just wondering why it has to go on the agenda? Do we normally approve webpages on the?
We had said last week when we were discussing it.
No, we did?
That it would be brought up on Tuesday for.
I withdraw. Sorry, wasn't paying attention. My apologies.
I mean, if I, if you don't want to, and you want to. I mean, if I, if you don't want to and you want to, that's what had been stated, I thought.
Yes, that is what was stated, that it would be brought up for review and a vote at the action meeting.
Wasn't it tabled Friday?
It was to come back on Tuesday during the action meeting after, I guess, some corrections had been made, and you would take a look at it again and vote.
Yeah, that's my memory of it as, as well. Okay, yes, Mrs. Jordan.
I'm not sure where the corrections, I, did it come from? Who did it come from?
When you click on the URL, the corrections were done live, so whenever she made the corrections, it was, it was changed. So when you click on the URL, it's the up-to-date version of it.
I don't know if we've received it.
Okay.
It's the same, it's the same one you received last time.
Okay.
I can send it out again.
I was just going to suggest it might be easier, and it'll be at the top of our emails if you send that URL again to everybody, please.
Okay.
Okay, other, yes, Mrs. Patrika.
I just, I don't want us to be in a situation tonight where we have to table it again. So I think it's important to have this discussion now so that it's perfected by tonight so we can-
That's why we're, that's why we decided to do it. So what other comments do you have?
I don't have any.
Oh, okay.
I'll send it right now.
Mrs. Givinelli.
My only question is, how much staff time will be involved in the spreadsheet? Is that, or is it just easier just to send us a link and us look at it on our own at our, at our pleasure?
Laura just informed me that it was very simple, that she just clicks it, and I don't know if someone can explain the technology part. It's not a matter of her gathering it, it's just clicking a button.
Okay.
And she said that she would be able to do that. She offered to do that.
Yeah, that's all I just-
I'm not asking her to do something outside of her job.
I know, I just went, just was getting, tried to get clarification on who was doing it and that kind of thing, really.
Go ahead, Ms. Stillwell.
I was texting while Ms. Gittens was speaking, but basically what could happen is, is that people would fill out that form, it would automatically populate a Google sheet, and then we would give you all the view rights to a Google sheet. So you could go in there and it would basically automatically update whenever anybody put in a comment.
So that it wouldn't be a job for someone else to do?
Pretty much, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It would be, it would pretty much be automatic once we set it up.
Awesome.
So it operates on its, on its own. I want it, yeah, to, to hear that because we did vote on a static site, or at least we, our consensus was for a static site. And in, in doing that, in part, we want it to virtually eliminate the need for staff or anybody else to have to put in time.
Now, the site itself, when you want like dates updated or if there are meetings and stuff like that, that would take a moderate amount of staff time. It wouldn't be overwhelming.
Exactly.
Right, but the form itself, who, when they're getting comments, that would, that wouldn't take really any time at all.
Okay.
Anyone receive it?
Okay, so that might be, since we're talking about this, that might be an issue to look at it several different ways. To look at the comments that come in several different ways, whether they come in to all of us, to board members, or whether it's set that it goes automatically to, what did you say, a Google sheet, a Google-
Yep.
Document.
It could automatically be emailed to all of you. It could go into that Google document. You could just access it with a click of a button. If you are concerned about responses, we could certainly have some kind of a static response that the board secretaries could just thank people and say, thank you for your comment. We'll take it under advisement. It could be like an automatic response so people, you didn't feel like you had to respond individually. So there's definitely options there.
And I wouldn't want to take away the opportunity for board members to respond personally if they want it to. Or, or we could have stock response, thank you for your comments or whatever. Okay, Mrs. Gittens.
If I may, the spreadsheet would allow anyone to, to have the information, the name and the email of anyone and their comments. And nothing would preclude us from saying, I want to respond to Ms. so-and-so or Mr. so-and-so. That's up to us individually.
Right, that's a good point.
And I, I think that a, a stock answer, and then as we educate the public that it's out there and what its purpose is, as a part of that, we let them know that you will probably not get an individual answer from this location, but we are gathering information as opposed to creating a conversation.
Okay, good point.
And there could be an auto-response that's generated. So when somebody clicks submit and that information is automatically put into the Google sheet, a response would go back to them, thanking them for sending their feedback and their comments. And it could even include something like, you know, you may hear individually from a board member, or you may, so we can craft that however it wants, but you, they would automatically get a response if you would like that to acknowledge that they took the time. And then you would have their information to be able to reach out individually if you so chose.
And I would suggest if everyone can open it and pull it up just to take a look at it prior to this evening, then it should be the last thing I sent you and all that's in there is the URL. So are there any other questions or comments or anything?
I like that they changed, changed the pictures. That's good. So the picture does dip.
We got a little bit older and we included some of our diverse student population.
I like that.
I, I just want to say thank you for-
Yes.
-all the work that you have done and with staff as well for putting together a lovely addition to our page. And of course, we'll have to revise pretty soon when we put out the information for the permanent superintendent.
And we have some, already discussed some ideas on the permanent superintendent search page. So we will be able to do that simply.
Yeah, the hard, the hard work is the establishment in the beginning and hearing from six different people as well as yourself and-
Can you please-
But it's looking, it's looking good.
Can you please ask for at least a consensus to see if we have, you know, the ability to bring it forward this, tonight?
Are we, I'll ask that. Are we ready to bring it?
I just, I just wanted to say, once, so, once this is approved, is it just, it's ready to go?
Oh, it's ready. She just has to click it and it's out there. But we would do it after tonight, I would assume, when we can explain exactly all the details.
Sounds good.
Yeah, we just had a few tweaks, and it hasn't really been that many days since we discussed it. So it'd be great to have it up and running by tomorrow morning with our approval.
And make sure you scroll all the way to the bottom. There is another picture at the bottom.
Okay, did you have more that you wanted to-
No, I was just wondering if you want to take a consensus so we'd have some idea that tonight's going to go smoothly or not.
Okay, I'll ask if, I'll, I'll ask board members, do you feel that it is, that you're ready to vote on this tonight? Everybody's, okay, so you're going to put it forth as good of the order?
Yes, I know.
And we will vote on it tonight? And it looks like we have unanimous consensus that we are ready to vote. Okay, did you have anything else to add for your comments?
I don't think so at this time. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mrs. Morgan.
So let's see, Lee County School District hosted an early childhood superintendent forum with the Southwest Florida Community Foundation and Early Learning Coalition. The goal of the three groups is to link all of the early childhood providers and the school district of Lee County to ensure that the high-quality instruction that's expected for kindergarteners is in the minds and programs of the pre-K providers. It was open to 183 providers. It was attended by only 19, but it got some good questions out of it. The, the point of this is, this partnership between the district and the early childhood providers is to provide professional development resources and recognition for programs that meet the standards for student performance on kindergarten evaluations. And so what, what has happened is that some schools are actually linked right now to early childhood providers, and the, the providers are visiting the schools, the kindergarten teachers are visiting the providers. And I think there's a lot of optimism that through this collaboration, which is really just about professional development alignment, we can do some good things. I want to congratulate staff on that $9 million Magnet School Assistance Program grant. I mean, that is absolutely incredible. And I am going to mention it again tonight because I think the public needs to hear it. But I also wanted to say, if staff is watching, that I think, what an awesome effort and what an incredible outcome for Franklin Park, James Stephens, and South Fort Myers High School. I have met with Commissioners Sandeling and Ruane to talk about the inter-local agreement, projects in the wind, and some of the problems that we're having as a result of the way we are working together in this new phase with, with a lot of development being done by the school district. I will be meeting with Pendergrass and Mann tomorrow. I was also at the community introduction to the Franklin Park project. I thought staff members Malloy and Ebaugh did a terrific job talking to the community, explaining to the community, collecting comments. And like Ms. Jordan, I have to say that the community history that came in from some of the members was, was really enlightening. Construction advisory, they have been discussing recommended changes to procurement's RFQ procedures. I expect them to bring them forward at a future date. We had a presentation by Harvard Jolly on the plans for the K-8 school in Astero, and there were a number of questions from committee members, but I think generally felt that the plan was pretty solid and addressed a lot of concerns that community's been raising. I think that's it for today, for now. I'll probably make some more comments this evening. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Givinelli.
I actually made most of mine yesterday. The only couple of questions that I have actually is regarding public comment for tonight. I am told that they're already lining up, getting, getting blue cards. So is there a time that they, that there should, like, what is our policy regarding public comment? Because it's 4:00 and-
So we don't specifically have a time to line up to start doing public comments and the cards? In board policy, it's first come, first served.
Okay, and that's, I want people to be aware of that. And then another issue is, I wouldn't say it's an issue, but we're getting lots and lots of emails regarding the LGBT, their rights, and, and there's so many that were inundated and we're not able to, I'm not able to really respond to all of them. And I would just like confirmation so the community knows that no rights have been lessened and that everyone has, you know, equal rights and that if that could be addressed right now, at least so that they know that, you know, everyone is being treated the same and, and, and we're not, no one's losing rights. Because I think that seems to be concerning, and I don't understand that. I don't know who-
If you'd like, I mean, either, either one of us, I can, from a, a school district perspective, I can say that, you know, in terms of our policies, they, they remain in place. We haven't made any changes to policies in terms of our procedures that are being carried on in school as it relates to the individual rights of all of our students. That continues to stay the same as it was prior to all this. So I do want to reassure the community, I understand, I've, I've heard some of that as well, that, that really, nothing has changed for all intents and purposes at the school level, or the, or the district for that matter.
Thank you. And then there's a new parental rights as well. Can that be just addressed a little bit too as well? Because I think it's, they're kind of, they, they're both important. So.
So that bill is going to be going to the governor, hopefully become effective in July. And it's basically reiterating a lot of the rights that parents already have, everything from education to healthcare. There are some very specific things within the bill. We will be, once it becomes effective in July, we will be drafting a policy that reflects the parents' bill of rights.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Patrica.
So I copied you all on a response to an Astero resident who requested a town hall meeting. I want you all to know that I will be securing the location on my own. I am not going to be relying on staff in any way, shape, or form to conduct that meeting. I will be using my own outlets for advertising that meeting. It is a political request that was made, and I'm happy to fulfill that request, but I just wanted you all to know, I'm doing that on my own. I was at this wonderful event for the Family Initiative. Have you all heard of the Family Initiative Autism Support Group out in the Cape? They just built a new building, and they're just, they're just a really wonderful group. Anyways, they had an event last Saturday, I think, for autism awareness and autism champions. And I was at the event just because I love Family Initiative. And it was such a proud moment for me when, I'm going to say her name incorrectly, Donna Jerf.
Yep.
Is that how you say her name?
D-J-E-R-F.
Yes, Donna Jerf from the school district of Lee County was announced as the recipient of the Believer Award. That award is, is given to an individual or organization that effectively uses its resources to positively impact individuals and families with autism. It's my understanding that she's like a, a pit bull, not in a mean way, but in like a relentless way to make sure that our kids get the resources and get the services that they need. And she's just beloved in the community. And Jessica Duncan, Ms. Duncan, her boss, was there crying when she received the award. It was just a really, it was a very proud moment for me as board member. I wasn't expecting it. She wasn't expecting it, and it was just really awesome. I hope you all have been participating in my Sunday. Text messages to you to vote for are soon to be American Idol champion, Casey Bishop. She is unbelievable. She gets, what's three times six? She gets 180 votes out of our household every Sunday. I invite you all to do the same. I was invited to participate in the National Day of Prayer at a church in Astero. And I was asked on Tuesday, and I went there on Wednesday, I think. I don't even remember the exact days. But it's funny because I'm sitting in the church, and the guy who got up to, you know, do the intro said pastors will be stepping on to the altar to give prayers in various categories. I was education. And as each pastor comes up, really try to focus on the category. And I'm like, oh, my gosh, I'm not pastor, like, what is going on? So when, when it was my turn to, to pray about education, I went up and I said, and I'm hoping you all will see the humor in this, I said, I, in full disclosure, I am not a pastor. I am Chris Patrica. I am a member of the Lee County School Board. And contrary to popular belief, being on the school board is not the complete opposite of being a pastor these days because the headlines are making us look like we're not, we're evil and whatever. They thought it was funny. So that was cool to be a part of that. I was, I went to a ceremony at Astero High School where scholarships were awarded specifically from the ECL and the Astero Historical Society. Thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars being given to our kids just at that school. I know what happens across the district. I happen to be lucky enough to attend that one. And somebody said to me, oh, you must be so tired of these events. And I said, no, there is no such thing as getting tired of these events. This is my favorite time of year. My face hurts from smiling. My, my smile muscles are not used to doing that so often. And it really is a wonderful time of year for, for our kids. I went to an event hosted by the Chamber called Education Recovering from the Pandemic. Dr. Atkins was one of the panelists, along with, is it Mr. or Dr. Meyer?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I know him as John, John Meyer.
Mr. Meyer, the person at-
Hodges.
Mike Martin and Dr. Martin, and Mr. Albritton from FSW.
Dr. Albritton.
I'm sorry?
Dr. Albritton.
Dr. Albritton, my bad. So, I mean, Dr. Martin was my father most entertaining. He always is. He's hysterical, he's irreverent, and he just, whatever. But I have to say, I was most impressed in terms of the content of Dr. Atkins- But I have to say, I was most impressed in terms of the content of Dr. Atkins' presentation. It was data-driven, it was, and, and as I sat there and I listened, it was sort of like a really quick reel or movie in my head of what, what this school district has done over the past year. And, and it reinforced for me the amazing work that, I'm only looking at like five staff members out here right now, but the amazing work that everybody at every single level of this district has done throughout the year. And I understand that there's significant outcry out there about removing the masks, and I desperately want to rip this thing off my face, too, but we are open. We are open. We have been open the entire year, every single day, to every single kid at every single level, and I'd like it if our community could please focus on the success and the wonderful things that our staff has done this year instead of beating us up for masks. DAC, I went to DAC, we had a transportation presentation and really good feedback from, from the, the group. I mean, these are parents who are putting their kids on buses every day, and they know what works and they know what doesn't work, and again, they provided real actionable, immediately actionable feedback to the transportation staff. Some of that stuff has already been implemented. So, you know, not recommendations to the board, but like real everyday operation stuff. And those are my comments for today. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Fisher?
And I'm going to reserve mine for this evening because it's very short.
Okay, I have just one or two things to say. Four of us were at the JROTC Award Ceremony this, yeah, this past week. I was listening for things that may not have been. It, it was, it was lovely. It was short and sweet because, you know, I'm remembering the huge ceremonies that used to take, that, well, hopefully next year will once again take place in a much larger venue, but the, the students, it's, it's amazing how many things some of these kids are involved in and the kind of amazingly outstanding GPAs. When you have a GPA that is five point and above, five and above, that's just kind of mind-boggling. I also, I, I didn't go in person to the pandemic, the state of the pandemic that Ms. Patrica had just referenced, but I did watch, I, I did watch it, and I think there was, I saw some other people. Actually, it seems to me that Dr. Martin was a really funny one. He said, he said a few things that I know I was laughing out, out loud, and so maybe he was the one, Dr. Atkins, maybe it was good that you went first, not that you didn't have great information, but just, he.
He's tough to compete with.
I'm sorry?
He's tough to compete with. He's very engaging as a speaker.
Yeah, he, and, yeah, he, he had a lot of interesting, he had some very nice jokes, and one or two, I thought, hmm, okay, he got to say that. All right, and finally, more seriously, EDAC Equity and Diversity Committee met last night, and we really haven't had much public comment this, this year, EDAC. Last night was an exception. We had three people, all of whom were speaking in support of LGBTQ community and the rights of the community, and each of them gave some, made some very moving statements. Our focus last night was presentation by Recruitment Department, teacher recruitment, and Lynn Harrell and Suzette Rivera were the presenters on that. They did an excellent job. They were able, you know, former teachers, able to pull in EDAC committee and get them to suggest things like, well, where are some places, what are, what's some out-of-the-box thinking that you might want to include? And interestingly, there were a couple of new suggestions, and I think Suzette actually wrote something, I don't remember which it was, but something down like, "Oh, that's Most of the suggestions were very, very similar to things that recruitment is already doing. And, and just an FYI for everybody out there, the numbers of education graduates, school of education graduates across the nation has fallen dramatically. And then you look at Florida, and then, I mean, you narrow these things down and you look at the numbers that we as a large district hire and other districts are, I mean, it's, I remember a time when I would, for instance, one time when I moved to a different state and I was nervous about, "Oh my gosh, I don't know, English, yeah, there are a lot of English teachers," and, you know, sweating getting a job, and now it's, I mean, it's a very, very competitive world of recruitment, and our, our department is doing just an excellent job with coming up with innovative ways to get out there, and, and it's been even harder during the pandemic because instead of being able to go in-person to, you know, the in-person recruitment fairs, which didn't happen this year, and when that happens, you can actually, you know, go up and kind of lasso recruits, but you had, they had to wait for people to sign up. So it's, it's been a very challenging year, and then you add that on top of the pandemic and a lot of teachers, especially teachers that may be, were nearing retirement this year or had medical issues. Some people took an early retirement or did a, did a switch. So it's going to be an especially challenging year. So, you know, if you're a still energetic retired teacher from up north, let's say, and you think you might want to teach in, in Lee County, you know where the website is, and it's easy, it's easy to apply. And finally, EDAC, because we did miss a meeting in, in the fall, I think November, we decided, they decided to meet in June, kind of at the brink of putting forth one or two recommendations for the board. So hopefully, we are going to be in person, and hopefully we have our, our quorum so that we can put forth, they can put forth those things. And we did, I did a presentation on the search for an interim superintendent and then what we're doing next, and they were very, very interested, lot, lot of questions, and I love that committee. It's very easy to get people to speak, and as usual, we go way over time. I think we were there for, we started at 5:30 and ended at something like quarter after seven, and there were still questions, so it's a great committee. Attorney Dupree Bruno, do you have comments?
I have none, thank you.
Okay, Dr. Atkins, do you have comments?
No, none at this time, thank you.
Okay, is there anything that we missed? Yes?
I just want to say, the governor has just signed into law House Bill 7045, which is the, it's relating to school choice. So that's something that, sixty-two pages of that, and that's something that you probably want to read because it has a lot of stuff that we deal with and we see every day, and it was just signed into law. So just.
Breaking, breaking news.
Breaking news.
Breaking news, and, and there's going to be a lot of that as all that, all the bills come across his desk, and.
Thank you.
We may have some big changes on, on the horizon. All right, so it is 4:37, and so we didn't, considering how we start, how we started, we are ready to end, and we're not, we're thirty-seven minutes over, but gives us time for dinner before six o'clock when we will meet again for Board Action Meeting. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.